Caller meeting to order, the Sun Monday, October 17th, 2016, Town and Falmouth Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We've just returned from executive session, are now in open session, and invite you all to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda are announcements, and I'll start with the first two announcements. First is since we do have the Falmouth Academy Field Hockey Team, I do want to congratulate them on their victory over Dartmouth, two to one this past weekend, so congratulations. Second item is the Town Council will be holding training sessions in this room, in the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall. We strongly recommend new employees, committee or board members to attend, as anyone who needs a refresher course. Please send an email to kim@kfish@falmouthmass.us to let us know what session you are planning to attend. There'll be two of them. One will be Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, at 3:00 PM, three to 4:30, and the other will be Thursday, October 20th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM in this room. Any other announcements from the Board or from Town Manager?
No, sir.
Okay, now time is for public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to comment on something that's not our agenda, you may do so at this time, and please limit your comments to two minutes or less. And if there's anyone who'd like to videotape or audiotape, if they'd please let us know. For audiotaping, you just need to inform us. Videotaping, you need to get permission. Mr. Alfonso?
Sir, I would like to ask the Board's permission to record audio video live.
Okay, we request to do a videotaping of our session. Any problem with that?
No problem. Just include the whole session.
I can't do that now with a, I mean, it's just an iPhone.
Oh, just an iPhone?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna get parts here and there.
Okay.
The one thing I would ask is if you would be consistent and not have it being, you know, focusing on certain people, but just have it stay in one place, so it does not become an intrusive part of the videotaping.
Which is your best side.
You choose.
So, actually, I have a summary of comments, can I? None nothing to do with the senior center, not yet. These are my dress slippers, so it's fine. It's the last day of summer, really, I want to be cozy. Ladies and gentlemen, Philofonto Precinct 6, I think by the crowd in the room this evening, our town is changing, and the way our information gets out there is changing. I would ask this Board for the future to look at different avenues besides the Enterprise and the Cape Cod Times or FCTV to get information out there. The site selection committee, excuse me, run by Mr. Viera, they did an amazing job, and for a very long time. They should--
Okay, if it's on the process of senior center--
No, 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 so what I'm saying is, so basically, to cut to the point, it shouldn't be, "This is happening, this is happening, this is happening." "Oh, hey, this is happening!" At the final end, and then a roomful of people show up and is surprised. If there was a different way to present information in social media, there was a, has anybody here for Filter-Free Falmouth? Raise your hand. So, another way of information sharing, I think, would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Next item, we're dealing with our minutes of the meetings, some public session July 25th and October 3rd, and these came in our email this afternoon. I have not had a chance to review them, so I would ask that we put that off into our next meeting.
I agree.
Okay. Under summary of actions, we have some licenses. The first is for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license for the Toucha Truck fundraiser, Cape Cod Fairgrounds. Do we have anyone from this organization here? If you could come forward, tell us about your activity?
Good evening, Board. My name's Eric Christiansen. I'm helping host the Toucha Truck event this Sunday. We wanted to have a beer garden at the event. I have Tony Jeffrey here tonight that will help orchestrate, set up all the proper infrastructure for the beer tent.
Question.
Mr. Moran?
Who is the Toucha Truck, or what organization will it benefit?
This is actually for--
The MJT Foundation, or actually tied in the ALS One Foundation as well.
Thanks. And what's MJT?
Michael T. Tasha.
Okay.
So it's the Tasha Family, Julita Tasha is the one that's actually put in for the event itself?
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly my question also, because I know Toucha Truck has become a fundraiser for other nonprofits, and in your license, you talk about being a for-profit organization, but the proceeds, or at least some of the proceeds, will be going to this, to this fund and to the ALS--
Correct.
--research. Okay, great. That's reassuring. All right, any other questions from the Board?
I move approval.
Second?
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is two special one-day wine and malt liquor licenses, 13 River Street LLC, the Really Rad Cyclocross, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, on Saturday, November 5th and November 6th.
Good evening. My name is Bill Sykes, and I am with 13 River Street LLC International Cycling, and will be holding the Festival of Cyclocross at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds on the 5th and 6th of November, and we're seeking one-day license for beer, for our beer tent for both days.
Questions from the Board? Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Next is a one-day all alcohol, one-day all alcohol liquor license for the Falmouth Theater Guild on Saturday, October 29th, 2016.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. That was quick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Could you explain a little bit, could you describe since you're right there as to what this event is gonna be happening on that day?
The Falmouth Theater Guild will be hosting the Brazen Bells Burlesque troupe on October 29th for a one-night performance. It's their annual Halloween Spooktacular, and they'll be up at Highfield Theater.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is the application for change of DBA from the Buca Restaurant and Wine Bar to the Buca Tino Restaurant and Wine Bar, and this is at 7 Nathan Ellis Highway. Any questions on that?
I move--
Second?
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. And we have a request to extend a seasonal alcohol club license for the Falmouth Yacht Club until January 15th, 2017.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. And next is a request from Landfall Restaurant to extend their seasonal alcohol and vicular license until January 2nd, 2017. I'll disclose that my son was employed at Landfall this summer. He was off at college and is not employed there currently.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. And the last item on our licenses is some, is to approve for the Commodores to work with the Town Manager and the Building Commissioner in moving the press box at Gulf Field to a more appropriate location. This is to move it back a little bit to be able to give a little more space between home plate and the press box.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion second for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good luck, Mr. Suss. Are you getting that worked out for us?
Thank you.
Next, our administrative orders. We'll do these as a blanket unless someone has a particular item they'd like to hold. First is to approve the warrant for the state election on November 8th, 2016. This being four pages, I will not read it out loud, since it does also summarize and have the four referendum questions, but I do want to remind people that the voting will take place the same it has for the past two years. Precinct 1 in Town Hall, Precinct 2 in the Gus Canty Recreation Center, Precinct 3 in the Falmouth High School Gymnasium, Precinct 4 in St. Anthony's Lodge, Precinct 5 in the North Falmouth Congregational Church, Precinct 6 in the Falmouth High School Gymnasium, Precinct 7 in the Quoit Congregational Church Hall, and the Precinct 8 in the Navigator Club, and Precinct 9 in the Jewish Congregation Community Center. And if we could have a motion to approve, so that was the warrant. Item number two is to approve the request for expenditure in the amount of $632.46 from the Fire Rescue Department. Item C is to authorize the grant application to the state seaport. I'd actually like to hold C myself. Item D is to authorize the development of an MOU, and we're gonna hold that one also. Item E is authorize the filing of a grant application to the state in conjunction with towns of Bourne, Mashpee, and Sandwich for engineering consulting services exploring potential wastewater infrastructure options and alternatives with existing facilities on joint base Cape Cod. And item F is to authorize the Town Manager to spend up to $1,072 from Article 17, April 2011 Town Meeting, to pay for supplies and materials related to a stream method and removal laboratory proof-of-concept study.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the administrative orders listed except holding C and D.
So approving A, B, E, and F.
Correct.
Second.
Any further discussion on those items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. So, moving on to D, and this is to authorize the grant application to the State Seaport Economic Council for an innovation grant in partnership with the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute to conduct a preliminary design feasibility study to redevelop Hui's Iceland Dock and related waterfront facilities. And for, we have, to tell us a little bit about that on the oceanographic, Representative from the Port Council, Mr. Munir.
Hi, Rob Munir, Vice President of Woods Hole Oceanographic. I do have a presentation, if you'd like that, or I can be briefer, or what would you care to?
I think it'd be great for us to hear, both where the public knows what you're planning, and so--
Yes.
Would you like hard copies?
That'd be great. Thank you. Here's the last one, if you wanted to know for a while.
I think we actually have this in small form also.
Yep, this is much better.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you, this is great.
There are letters.
Great.
We've received letters that have been received in support of the application by the town and the institution. I have one more document to do, which I'll provide you with.
Great.
For our lacrosse team and others, I don't expect that we'll be getting to your issue that you want to discuss till about 8 o'clock. I will promise to, if you wanted to, take a walk and wait outside. You're certainly welcome to watch in here also, but just so you know, to stand there for 45 minutes while we deal with some of the issues, but I'll make sure that when it comes up that you can go get back in. You might have some homework you need to get done, so.
You do need to be quiet, though.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay.
So, what I'd like to do is present a little bit about what this innovation grant is with respect to the Seaport Economic Council program. So, Joe, can you give me the next slide? Just hit the forward button. So, our goal here is to be co-applicants on a grant proposal to the Seaport Economic Council. The Seaport Economic Council program was established by executive order in August 2015 by Governor Baker, and the goal was to promote economic growth by making grants available to coastal communities and their partners. There's five types of grants: innovation grants, grants for public education, maritime activities, marine sector grants, and coastal infrastructure. I think we fit a lot of those, the nature of this project, but the one that we have chosen is the innovation grant, and the reason for that is that it is about promoting jobs, economic growth, in the marine research and technology area. There's, the grants are up to a million dollars, but typically 200,000, 700,000. There's 78 coastal communities that are eligible, and there is a requirement for a 20% cost share. And then they've established a set of criteria for award, and they include vision and clarity, strong partnerships, alignment with the goals of the program, resilience and sustainability, particularly with respect to climate change, and the ability to actually execute the proposal. So the opportunity is with respect to what we're doing and planning to do in Woods Hole, and as everybody knows, Woods Hole is a center for excellence of marine research. There are numerous research institutions down there, as everyone knows, and Hui happens to be the largest among those. It's also a center of marine operations, so those research institutions are involved in marine activities and have waterfront facilities, as well as the Seamship Authority and the Coast Guard, fishing fleet, and a lot of recreational voting. So it's a maritime center and it's a research center. And Hui is a global leader. We employ about 950 people, and if you add our post-docs, graduate students, interns, undergraduate summer programs, and volunteers, our population is about 1,450 people. So we're a significant player in the village and in the town of Falmouth. We've just completed a facilities assessment at Hui, and the idea was to look at all of our facilities, and the number-one result of that analysis was that our waterfront facilities are key to our well-being as a research institution, particularly one involved in oceanography. And so we have been working on the notion of a long-term plan for redevelopment of our waterfront facilities. So we have what's called the Iceland Dock, and that's probably what most people are familiar with. It's a sort of triangular shape that sticks out from shore. It's the home port to our three vessels. We get a lot of visiting vessels. We hold community events, educational events. It's also the activity where kind of the shore activities and our offshore activities meet. We have shops there. We mobilize our ships. We conduct, we have our diving center there. We have laboratories that put underwater vehicles out to sea. So it is the key kind of interface between our research activities, our engineering activities, and going to sea. It is a concrete deck on 200 piles. It is 48 years old. It was constructed in its current configuration in 1968. It has a 50-year design life, so we are not far from reaching our functional design life. It's not in any way about to fall down, but we have identified this as, A, a strategic facility, and B, one that needs to have attention paid to it in the next decade or so in order to ensure our long-term presence and ability to do what we envision we need to do over the next half century or more. So the idea is to apply for the grant in order to do a conceptual design and feasibility study. The purpose of that study is to kind of develop a roadmap for how we get from where we are today, knowing that this is a long process to go from an idea to one that we can actually implement, and this would help us conduct that first assessment and develop a plan for how we go about doing that. So we envision deliverables like design, permitting plan, constructibility analysis, a budget, a schedule, scoping documents for some of the earlier tasks like engineering and design, and then a community engagement and communication plan for how we would conduct this whole project from start to finish. And we envision this as step one in a seven-to-10-year process. So the notion of the approach that we are suggesting to take is that we develop a partnership with the town of Falmouth. That is the way this program is structured. We would be co-applicants with Falmouth being the primary applicant and Hui being the co-applicant. We have developed a, an application, they have an application process. We have followed that. Our application is ready. I think we provided a draft earlier, a week or so ago. We're gonna make a grant request of 500K. We have to provide a cost share, and Hui is proposing to do that, and we have budgeted 155,000 for our portion of the cost share. So all total, this portion of this early stage of the project would be about 655,000. The application has to be submitted by November 1st. We're planning on having it ready the Friday before, and the way the process works is the Seaport Economic Council meets, they review all the applications, and then they make an award, or awards, there'll be multiple awards, and we expect that to take place in January. So that's a quick summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just in, one of the bullets we have is talking about the benefits, and I just want to reiterate this one, as to what kind of work does the town have to put into it, and what kind of resources financially does the town have to put into this application?
So we are not expecting any financial resources, other than that we have been engaging with Julian and Town Planner Brian Curry to get some guidance. We envision that having this as a connection between us and the town of Falmouth will be a good thing for the long term, so we would expect to keep the town informed, ask advice, engage them in things that would relate to permitting, design, you know, the community engagement part. So, in kind, in terms of asking to, you know, meet occasionally and stay informed.
But the actual creation of the application will be done by Hui, and any money that's put forward will be done by Hui?
Yes, I mean, the heavy lifting of this program is gonna be done by Hui. I do believe there's one more slide. Let me just note in this, we have, one of the things that the grant asked for is letters of support. We've gotten quite a nice list, and we expect more to follow from a variety of our local representatives, our congressmen, the Falmouth Chamber, Cape Cod Chamber, and then a host of businesses. And one of the things that really connects what we can do at Hui, it's not just supporting our own institution, but we support a lot of businesses in terms of the technologies that they want to deploy, where we have cooperative agreements, subcontracts, or just allow them to use our test facilities. So we envision this being a great resource.
Great. Any questions from the Board?
Just a comment to just thank you for this initiative, because certainly the Woods Hole community and its research institutions is a huge source of economic development for us, and we're just glad to see that you're expanding your capabilities to invite more business in. Thank you. That is, that is our goal, and this, this one seems like a real win-win for everybody.
Do you have any more of those brochures? Any other comments from the public?
Could I make a motion to approve the grant application?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Next item is the authorized development of an MOU, a memorandum of understanding regarding potential medical marijuana dispensary. Mr. Suss, if you'd give us a little background on as to why this is coming up?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Over the past year or so, the town has had multiple contacts from one or more entities interested in developing a medical marijuana dispensary in the town of Falmouth. It is, as the Board's aware, consistent with state statute and fully permissible. Pursuant to that, inquiry tonight would be to ask the Board if you would consider authorizing the development of a memorandum of understanding, or what is known in some other portions of Commonwealth as a community benefit statement, that I would bring back to the Board for your further consideration. This would be in particular with an entity called Seven Points. That is in the process of acquiring a facility at 31 T-Ticket Highway. Again, nothing has been consummated or concluded to date, but this would allow the discussion to go forward, which we would bring back to the Board in the very near future for your further consideration. I have been working with Town Council Frank Duffy and with Police Chief Edward Dunn on this as well.
The location of that on East Falmouth Highway is right across from Stop &amp; Shop, is that correct? Is the property further back from that?
Yes, essentially, correct.
Okay. It's my understanding about these community benefit agreements that for the medical marijuana dispensaries to come into town, they hope for a letter of support or non-opposition from the town to come in, but they actually don't need those. They can still come into town without that, and if we take a proactive memorandum of understanding of community benefit, we can actually get some things from these organizations to prepare for what may be happening when they come in. We maybe will get some financial remuneration to cover additional costs that may be happening because they are in town, and it gives us actually a chance to tell them how we want them to do them, as opposed to if we do nothing, we actually have very little to say. And that would be a reason why I would hope we would support the idea of coming up with an agreement for these people to come in and establish what we would like them to do when they come into town. Mr. Moran?
I'm very much against this proposal. As the president of the Cape and Islands Selectmen and Counselors Association, we had a presentation by Senator DiMascio, as well as the opponents, and the thinking is, by the district attorney, that these are really placeholders for organizations, businesses, lobbyists, hoping for question four to pass, and that, that, so I think that if we are in favor of this proposal, we may be getting more than is simply stated in the original proposal. That's one of the reasons. And the second reason is that I, you know, I think that certainly that, you know, there is, there are important uses for medical marijuana. I think, you know, that I'm obviously very much in favor of that, but this is really a different message that we're giving to our young people that, you know, and I, I just think for those reasons, I would not support it.
I'm not sure I understand what the message that you think is getting sent that's different?
Oh, that, you know, that marijuana is more accessible. That's how some people perceive it, even if there's a facility that's really originally for medical use right in town.
But if it is medicinal use, it cannot, it cannot transfer to, it's stuck as a medicinal purpose. It cannot, if Article 4 passes, if question four passes, it can't then become a general--
It can with permission.
From--
They would have to come back.
Right.
But it would, it would really be a placeholder, and that's what a lot of these organizations are doing in Massachusetts right now. They're getting ready for the win on the vote.
Mr. Suss?
Question, as I understand it, they can go ahead and open this facility--
Question, as I understand it, they can go ahead and open this facility by right. And all we're trying to do is at least reserve some opportunity to negotiate with them on some considerations that might help support our public safety needs, which are likely to increase, because we know there's going to be some abuse of this. And so it seems to me we're stuck. We're going to get an institution like this opening up, and the question is, can we derive some benefit from it that would help us actually support meeting the needs of the community as a result of the impact of an organization like this?
Ms. Braga?
I certainly, I understand the concerns that Selectment Moran is raising. I think the problem is the timing of this. If the question passes on the ballot, we're in a slightly different position. So I think now is maybe our window of opportunity to try to create or carve up some benefits that will come back to the town. And then I think we obviously have to tackle that next problem if the, you know, if this is a placeholder. But I think if this organization is looking to come up with an understanding with the town, it's our opportunity to perhaps, again, bring some resources back wherever they may need to be placed, and perhaps have some constraints built into that memorandum of understanding before, you know, before the ballot goes to the vote. So I am concerned, I think it can be a slippery slope. However, again, they could open up tomorrow and not really ask us for anything. So I think it's an opportunity, because they are looking for a little bit of a nod from the town, for us to at least try to eke out some benefit from it for us.
Ms. Moran?
On that point, they have asked many, many communities for this approval, even if it's a conditional approval. And if you just look at it logically, say, you know, 20 towns have been asked, 10 of them have said, no way, 10 of them have said, we'll negotiate. Where would you go as a business? That's what this is.
Ms. Brown?
Right, that was a point I was going to make, is that we're putting our hand up and saying, yeah, we're willing to deal with you, come on over here. Maybe that's more of an attraction for them, whereas if we're less receptive to negotiate, they may be less inclined to come here, which I maybe would prefer.
And I should remind you, what's going to happen with this is, this is the development of a potential memorandum of understanding. It would then come back to us for actually, for us to approve it with this organization. This is a sort of a generic, if anyone's going to come forward, these were the benefits we require. This does not approve it with this organization, nor does it give them the letter of support. That's another question that would have to come back to us, for us to then say, and we could have an option, saying, here's the memorandum we have, and not write a letter of support. That's something else we could do. But that's a different thing we have to debate also, at a different meeting. This is just authorizing the town manager to develop a potential memorandum of understanding.
So then this is our own initiative in response to the idea that they may come?
And that there are other, or there are other towns that have done this, and we've taken a look at what they have done, said, we should go ahead and be ready and have one in place, so that if someone comes to us and we know that they're interested, we would already have a document for us to approve. And so what happened is the town manager would come back to us and say, here's what I've created, what do you think of it? And if we don't like the pieces of it, or don't like certain parts of it, we can then change it and edit it for consideration, and then ultimately for consideration with a particular organization.
So we're not actually sending a signal to them, this is just our own preparedness?
I think the fact that we are putting, I think it does show that we are willing to consider it by doing this. I think it does send somewhat of a positive message.
And what are the choices again?
Well, there are no choices before the board tonight.
Well, I'm saying, no, it's approve, or what are they asking for specifically?
Nothing. Tonight, the town manager's saying, can he be authorized to develop a community benefits package? It would be a potential package to be negotiated with an organization that wanted to come in. It would then come back to us, for us to approve it with that specific organization, which we could say no.
But I think that's not exactly...
Well, they asked for a statement of non-opposition.
Yes.
If the board is willing to do that.
That's not tonight. But that's not before you tonight.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Patterson?
Just to further clarify, what you're saying is that you're actually coming up with a kind of a bargaining position to start off, should such a company locate itself in Falmouth? Because, I mean, it sounds like they're going to be able to do it anyway.
Right.
And all we're trying to do is prepare for that particular situation, so that we can go in and say, look, you're going to have an impact on our town. We'd like to see some compensation, if you will, through this community benefit agreement, and have something prepared ahead of time.
Exactly.
Now, are they going to require any kind of special permits whatsoever?
Not from the town. This is governed under state statute. There's a statute that's been passed, they are fully legal. All they need to do is meet the zoning qualifications, and they have done that. They are in an area that is compliant with the zoning requirements. It's in a section that has been zoned specifically to allow this as state statute mandates.
So from their perspective, it would be just a gesture of goodwill if they agreed to do something to benefit public services here in town?
That's how I see it.
Fundamentally.
Well, I don't think there's any harm in at least preparing a bargaining position to start off with and hope that we actually get some compensation.
Just to confirm, if we do nothing on this, this will not prevent such a facility from located in Falmouth? And we've had multiple knocks at the door, and I think it's a significant indication of the size of our community and its year-round stature, unlike many others on the Cape. But I don't expect this to disappear one way or the other, irrespective of the outcome of the recreational marijuana issue. These entities are here to stay, and some have already been approved in the Commonwealth. Certainly none here in Falmouth as yet. When I say approved, that is by state statute, not by the local authority.
We do have a hearing scheduled for 7:30. Do you want to have more discussion on this and come back to it, or...
Well, I would move that we authorize the town manager, he's at least just going to try to enter into drafting something for us to review.
Right.
I mean, that's what I understand it to be. So I think it doesn't hurt to have something for us to look at, something specific that we can, you know, look at, get some comment on if necessary. It's not doing anything beyond that. I understand it's somewhat of a signal that we're at least willing to entertain that. But again, I think that what's most likely to drive the placement of a facility like this are the economics of it for our business. I mean, that's why businesses decide to locate. Yes, if it's a little bit more of a friendly environment, that's great, but in the end, they don't really need our permission. So I think if we're able to at least have something to look at, it gives us some more information to deal with, and then we can go from there.
I second her motion.
Okay.
Okay, and a question on the motion. Does that not require the town manager to sign a statement of interest?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No.
That was my question.
He can't do that. Actually, he can't even sign it. That has a statement, has to come from us, about either opposition or support, or non-opposition or support.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, four to one, it passes. Next item is a liquor license hearing. Notice is hereby given, under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended, that DNC Parks and Resorts at Falmouth... Mr. Brown, could you turn the lights back on for us?
Yes.
At Falmouth LLC, doing business as the Sequest Beach Hotel, has applied for a transfer of an all-alcoholic inhaler license located at 350 Quaker Road, Falmouth, Mass. Your hearing will be held in Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, October 17th, at 7:30 on the above application. This is published on Friday, October 7th, 2016.
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse myself?
Okay.
Thank you.
For the applicant, we have someone here from the Sequest Beach or DNC Parks and Resort?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Park, and I have served as a general manager of the Sequest Beach Hotel for the past six years. Indeed, it's a privilege and honor to be a part of the community, and we definitely respect it, participate in working within this actual community. We were fortunate enough to be able to sell the hotel to an organization identified as Delaware North, located out of Buffalo, New York. We are looking forward to the enhancement of the property. We're looking forward simply to transfer the liquor license over to the new organization that has purchased our hotel.
And I'm assuming, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
I'm assuming, I mean, I know the Sequest has operated for a long time, and in the six years that you've been there, they've sold, I'm sure, volumes and volumes of alcohol. You're well aware of everything that you need to do to comply in terms of the staff that you have, and I'm sure that's going to continue.
Absolutely.
Ms. Patterson?
Is it likely that the staff will be rehired by Delaware North? Could, as a...
I'm the first.
You're the first, yeah.
They will be rehired, sir.
I might say that I've run into Delaware North as a company in the major national parks in the country. They actually operate in many of the concessions in many big national parks. I was just recently in Skyline Drive, and they were the operators. And they usually do hire local people, so I feel kind of good, based on my own connection with this company, about the fact that Delaware North happens to be the new owner of the Sequest. I'm expecting them to be good community citizens in support of our treasure of town here, so glad to see the name associated with the new owner.
We do have a report from the police department, that they have reviewed the core information, and they have no problem with this request. Do you expect that there'd be any changes that we would notice soon, or in five years?
In five years, just the enhancement to always continuously improve the property. And we still enjoy the opportunity to work within the community, not just make money here, but to also participate.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on support of this application? And they'd like to speak against this application? Hearing done. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Patterson, motion?
Second.
Ms. Braga, second. Close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
It's up to us to make a decision.
I move that we approve the application for change, transfer of license.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done. The ayes have it. Ms. Moran, please come back in. Next item is a special event. This is a recurring recommended event, the Falmouth in the Fall Road Race, Woods Hole to Falmouth Heights on Sunday, November 6th, 2016.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Just a question, when I was reviewing the application, I don't see anything in here that suggests that the Rec Department has actually approved this application date. I just want to make sure there's no conflict. As far as we know, has it been reviewed by them? Is the field available? Has to do with an application for the Falmouth Heights Ball Field.
This is on Sunday?
Yes.
Selectman Patterson, I know that they were contacted and given the opportunity to review and comment, although as you note, I do not see any response either, with my apologies. To the best of my knowledge, everything is fine and available for this recurring event.
All right, well, I will move approval.
Second.
Motion a second to approve. Any further discussion? It does raise two questions I have. One is, maybe we could go on a future agenda, consideration of the parking meters in the heights. I think in the past, we've considered having those not in action for the winter, fall, winter and spring months, so we could put that on a future agenda item. And if you'd also look into the casino blocking off some of the meter spots with the police department, I appreciate that, because...
Yeah, I'm happy to comment on that, Mr. Chairman. We did receive, as you know, an email on that over the weekend. Police department has followed up on that, and that was an inadvertent error by an individual working in the parking area. It was very quickly corrected, and it will not reoccur.
Great, thank you very much.
And if I might, I'm just noticing, I just wanted to close the loop, that I do see that in email, it's in our packet, was sent out to the Rec Center, about, to the Recreation Department. It's sent out to all department heads about this event. So it looks like, just to confirm that there was contact.
We had a motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done. The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is we have a report from the Cape Cod Commission and Barnstable County, Paul Nintewiki and Jack Units. Who's going to go first?
I think I'll go first, for the record. Paul Nintewiki, Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. What I usually like to do is, on an annual basis, get around and talk to Selectmen about the commission, what we've done a little bit in the last year, what we're going to do over the next year. So we're here tonight to talk a little bit about that, and I have the honor to introduce you, if you haven't met him already, to our county administrator, who's been on the job for about eight months, Jack Units. Jack is a man that I've known by reputation prior to his taking the job with Barnstable County. He was the former mayor of Brockton for 10 years, and he's a lawyer with significant experience, government experience, and experience around government. And it's been, it's been a pleasure to have him on board. And so you might have heard some things about Barnstable County and where it's headed, and so Jack's going to fill you in on some of that. So I just am here to say that, for the most part, we spent a lot of last year working on wastewater-related issues, so we've finished that one-year implementation report and watershed reports back to DEP. We'll be working with them more closely over the next couple of months. And so all of that information is back with the towns, too, so we look forward to working with you to continue the effort to move forward to solving this huge environmental and economic problem, and we're making a lot of progress. And Falmouth has been a leader on that, especially on sort of the use of alternatives, and some of the feedback we're getting from some of the projects that you're doing. Looking forward, we have to complete our update of our regional policy plan. So the Barnstable County Regional Policy Plan is developed by the Cape Cod Commission. It's a county ordinance, and so those projects that trip Cape Cod Commission review and come to us to be reviewed are reviewed by minimum performance standards that are set in the regional policy plan. So it's really important for you to sort of consider that, consider how the commission's been doing, how the regional policy plan either has worked or could be improved, and to let us know that input as we move forward. When we updated it last, we made a move away from sort of a one-size-fits-all regulatory program, and gave to the 15 towns an ability to raise thresholds on your own. We have raised thresholds. Falmouth actually has two areas, the most on the Cape, in your industrial service and trade areas, where we've raised thresholds from 10,000 square feet for commercials to 40,000 square feet. We're continuing to move in that direction, where we want to identify areas in towns where you want and need growth, especially looking down the road at the costs of complying with some of the wastewater concerns that we have. We know that new development, if it's not strategic, is going to be in a place where you'll have to remove 100% of that nitrogen, and that's going to be a difficult thing to do. So what we've been doing with our reset projects and wastewater have been moving at the same time. But our hope is that in the regional policy plan, we'll be able to identify those areas where we can really sort of get out of the way and provide a structure for the kind of as-of-right development that the town wants and sees fit to do. So that's an important discussion to have. There are also two sort of issue areas that will be emphasized in the new regional policy plan that we haven't emphasized in the past. One of them, sort of an outgrowth of the wastewater planning, is capital planning. I think we, at the commission now, we will have the ability to sort of identify capital projects across the Cape, you know, from roads and bridges and wastewater and water to utility activities, and be able to give you that information back in a way where you can see if it might be beneficial. We think there are potentially some significant cost savings associated with a more coordinated approach to capital planning. We also think that we can attract some more federal funding to some of those capital projects with a little bit more of a multi-community strategic response, especially from the Federal Economic Development Agency. So we are looking forward to that on the capital planning side. And the other issue that we are going to focus on really is housing. Given where the wastewater discussion is now, and the fact that it's taken really sort of 10 years to get to the point where we're at, it seemed that housing has really sort of congealed as a regional issue in less than 12 months. You know, really, in the last year, it's come to the top of a lot of people's agenda for things that need... for things that need to get done. And when I look at it, we've been doing a lot of work to sort of model the Cape Cod economy. And if you just look at sort of standard economic indicators, like regional domestic product, the Cape outpaces Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the nation in its regional domestic product and its recovery from the Great Recession. If you look at employment, we're basically at full employment. There were a number of employers that couldn't open this summer on the Cape because they couldn't get help. If you look at, there are more year-round residents working at higher wages than there ever have been before. So if you look at those four economic indicators, you would say the Cape Cod economy is red hot. But when I go out and talk to people, that's not what I hear back. So the big question that we want to, we need to answer is why do so many people feel like they are not benefiting from those economic indicators? And it's really because we have two economies. We have a seasonal economy and we have a year-round economy. And especially on the upper and mid-Cape, there's more of that year-round economy. But when you look at housing, 35% of the housing stock Cape-wide are second homes. That ranges from a high of 71% of the homes in Truro to a low of 17% in Sandwich. We have 1/3 of the Massachusetts coastline. So when that happens, that housing market twists the economy at the top in a way that's difficult to sort of counteract unless we sort of focus on the need for different kinds of housing. We have half of all the seasonal homes in Massachusetts on Cape Cod. And so we have a lot of separated, single-family homes. What we don't have is a lot of different life-stage housing and different housing by design. And what we don't have in some of our downtown areas is the kind of density that we would need to even help us address some of the environmental issues like wastewater. So those are the kind of discussions that I think you're going to see as part of this new regional policy plan, so I wanted to highlight that for you tonight. My hope is that there will be a draft ready soon into the next calendar year, so there's still time to sort of weigh in on that, and we would love to hear from you. So that is all I have, unless you have questions later on, but what I'd like to do is just introduce, reintroduce Jack, and he'll take it from there.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks. It's a great honor to be here, and I want to take a motion, a moment of personal privilege just to say it's been such a pleasure to serve these eight months under Mary Pat Flynn. In a day and age where elected officials are sometimes running into meat grinders, it's so heartwarming to be able to work with somebody who is dignified, professional, and always considerate of other opinions. So it's a real pleasure to have a Falmouth resident who stands above everybody else. It is a pleasure to be here, and we've come a long way in the first eight months. We have worked very hard to get our fiscal house in order because a lot of the things Paul just talked about can't be done without money. We can talk great gravy, but we can't push progress if we don't have the financial base to get back to the bond market. And that's what the county has been focused on these last eight months. And I'm pleased to say that the year-end numbers have started to look pretty good for us, so we should be back sooner than we expected. And that's important because there are a lot of important things that we want to do to complement what Paul just talked about. He was kind of humble in talking about the need for more housing. We hear it everywhere we go on the Cape. And we need to do more in the area of affordable housing, and not just affordable housing for the seasonal workers, affordable housing for some of our seniors that cannot longer afford their own homes, of the transitional housing that Paul was talking about. He initiated several years ago a home program here on Cape Cod, and that has been a huge success in helping in this transition. Over $14.5 million has been invested in that program, and over 1,300 units of housing have been created. In addition to that, to help homeowners, the commission years ago started the septic low impediment program. And again, over $35 million has been invested on the Cape, and over 3,500 new septic systems have been repaired or installed. Again, another Falmouth resident, George Hersfeldt, is still with the county, but he's now focused full-time up at the Innovation Test Center at Borne Air Base. That's critically important to us because those kind of proprietary, non-proprietary systems that are being experimented upon up there right now could solve some of our nitrate issues going forward. And that's came to a nuhead last week when we talked to the directors of Silent Spring, who are now testing 10 estuaries and abeyments on Cape Cod Bay. And what they're doing is they're following the nitrates with operating under the assumption that behind the nitrates is PFOs. If that comes to be, then we're going to have to really focus long and hard on failed septic systems across Cape Cod. And hopefully, George will have us a step ahead of the game in that, as he develops some of these lease, lesser expensive septic systems that we can begin to install. The county's also looking at, also looking at dredge work, expanding the dredge system that we have. We've already audited a new dredge, so we'll have two dredges in operation next fall. It takes about 300 days to get the dredges online, so it'll be a while. And what we really need to do is to see the towns come through with the permits. A number of the towns are now going to the 10-year permits, which means we can plot and plan for steady work, and you can plot and plan for consistency in your abeyments. That's not only an environmental issue, it's an economic issue as well. So we look forward to working on that, and Paul and I have been working to try to figure out a process that will be paralleling your permit applications or permit approvals with new dredges. We'd like to get a pond dredge operating, we'd like to get a sill dredge operating. And just very briefly, we already know that through George's department, over 1,000 beaches are tested every year, and he supplements health departments all over the county. But we do a margin, a moderate work in terms of insect control, particularly with some of the new, I read about the long-start tick on your bike trail. These are areas of concern that aren't really funded right now by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so we're focused on, and we'll be working with DPH to try to get more money into the program so we can do a better job controlling some of these new ticks that we're finding on our Cape. Lastly, the, I think probably the most important thing that we can do as a county, and we've had some long discussions about this, is pulling the delegation together, our state delegation, our federal delegation, and having the administrator of our county get back out there to fight for the things that are important to Cape Cod. I was talking to Marty Walsh recently, and he estimates that he's got about $20 billion worth of projects either under construction or in the pipeline in Boston. None of that would have been possible if we, the taxpayers of the Commonwealth and country, didn't invest $20 billion in pressing the central lottery and cleaning Boston Harbor. We are probably, on Cape Cod, the best asset the Commonwealth has in terms of net revenue gained from our tourist industry that goes back into Boston. And it's about time that we start pounding the table and saying, now we need you to help us with our water issues. There's no reason that people of Hyannis should be drinking unclean water. And there's no reason that we should be paralyzed by the fear that our abeyments are shellfish or being polluted, when we can control it with a little more public infusion. So we will get together with our delegation, we will work hard with them, we will make sure they're informed, and do whatever we can to make sure that Cape Cod starts to get the return of its investment that it so often gives back to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's what county government is supposed to do for you. It's supposed to be borderless. A government without borders is a government that can fill some of the needs that Cape Cod is facing from P-Town to here. And lastly, Open Cape, we're going to do everything we can to fix our IT department so we can partner with Open Cape and get that last mile out sooner than later. Those are our immediate goals, that's our mission. It's been an honor to work with the commission and Paul and his staff to get these kind of things back on the board, and we expect to be successful. So in closing, I want to say that Paul and I are here tonight to hear from you and to let you know that we are there for you, so please call us. Julian, here's my cellphone number. Anytime we can help, we want to help. And that's what county government does. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I just commented...
Mr. Brown?
I would just comment that I'm glad to see the Cape Cod Commission transitioning to more of a planning agency than a regulatory agency, and that's good. Thank you.
Just sort of kudos for two of your staff members. Shannon Jarboe and Callie Harper have been instrumental in helping us draft our first, well, I would say revised multi-hazard mitigation plan for Falmouth, and it's looking really nice, and we should be seeing a final draft version coming out of our contractor very shortly, but they were very helpful in helping us basically be able to put together a document based on a previously, I think Province Town's same plan was actually approved by FEMA, so we had a kind of a leg up in that we knew what was required, but they were instrumental in getting us all the information we needed, so thank you.
And of course, I would support your praise of Mary Pat Flynn, certainly representing the same things when she was here also, and she was a delight to work with, and so I understand why she's doing so well. I'm glad you're keeping her busy too. Thank you. Next is Cape Light Compact Report, and the EverSource DPU proceeding. Maggie Downey?
Do you think everyone, we are, or...
Yes.
She's going to... There are even others wanting to use my laptop.
Unless you have it already in the system, you can plug in the flash drive. There's an opening on the right-hand side, Maggie. Yep, right there.
Can you play at the escape? Here we go.
I brought extra copies. I know I sent this for the board copy, but if anyone would like a copy? Great, thanks, Ron. So Ron Zweig is, as you know, is your representative to the Cape Light Compact Governing Board, and my name is Maggie Downey, and I'm the administrator of the Cape Light Compact. Did you know how to get it into slide mode?
Slide show and then, yeah.
There you go. So thank you for having me here this evening. I am here at the request of the governing board, and Ron particularly. We, the governing board asked that I meet with all of the boards of selectmen and town councils on the Cape and Vineyard to bring to the board's attention and enter, see if you have any questions, on what has been, was filed last August, which is the EverSource Grid Modernization Plan. This is a major piece of public policy document, and the governing board felt that there wasn't enough public awareness and/or discussion on this subject matter. So this is merely of informational purposes, and at any time, it tends to be a little technical and dry, so if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to stop and I'll go into, if I get into too much jargon, just let me know and I'll give more detail. Go ahead to the next slide. So what is it that I'm talking about? Keep hitting the next three buttons so it all comes up, otherwise they'll be here forever. So what am I talking about? Grid modernization, the what and why. What is an electric grid? The electric grid is the infrastructure that has been designed to move electricity from central power stations across transmission lines, distribution systems, in order to get electricity into our homes. It's a very antiquated system. It has not been updated or evaluated in over a century. And most of the infrastructure that's in place now was designed and was a result of engineering that is, in some cases, over 100 years old. So grid modernization is all about data. In today's world, everything is data-driven. If you look at a great example, it's our smartphones. Everything can be handled through two-way communication, and that's what grid modernization is about. It's about the digitization of the electric grid, the ability for two-way communication between consumers and the utility, between substations and the call center desk back at that utility. I think if you go to the next slide, picture is worth 1,000 words. On your left, what you have now is you have the grid as we see it today. It's a one-way, electricity flows from a power plant across transmission lines down to distribution systems and into our homes and businesses, and that's about, that's it. When there is an outage on the diagram on the left, when there's a power outage, the entire, the lack of two-way communication can result in the entire grid going down, blackouts, and outages taking longer to fix and to even identify. What is being discussed now, not only in Massachusetts but elsewhere across the country, are the decisions on the right, which is a smart grid. And if you notice on that smart grid, it's information, electricity, communications occurring both two ways, not only from the old central plants but into our communities, from distributed generation, from things like your PV systems that are out on your landfill, from your wind farms, from electric vehicles in people's homes or charging stations. Again, all about two-way communication. This picture, what it enables, and what this enables a smart grid to do, is to isolate information, and in the event of an outage, rather than the whole grid having to go down, two-way communication enables utility to know where the outage is much quicker, which means that it can also be fixed much quicker. So the amount of time that we are without power should be shorter. It also enables and creates the ability to island off an area and to create microgrids, which is important, especially for the Falmouth area, with Falmouth Hospital, Hyannis, you have a main hub in the event of a natural disaster. The smart grid could enable the town to pursue a microgrid such that you could island off the town, certain area within town that has critical infrastructure, so that in an event of a natural disaster or major power outage, that section of a community stays on and is operable. So why should we care, other than my board asked me to come and talk to you all? Want to go to the next slide? We should care because, one, as I already talked about, this is the first time that the Department of Public Utilities, which regulates the electric distribution companies, has ordered them to come back to submit, which they did, grid modernization plans. There are three electric distribution companies, or EDCs in Massachusetts. EverSource, formerly M-Star, which serves most of the southeastern Massachusetts and Boston area. National Grid, comes a little bit into southeastern Mass, but mostly central Mass, and then Unitil. So those are the three EDCs, electric distribution companies, that were asked to submit these plans. And the choices that we make today, because these are capital improvements, they're infrastructures, they're going to have their impact not only on us, our children, but our children's children. So these are big policy decisions that we should be at least cognizant of and know what we're getting. There's also an opportunity here for consumer empowerment. It could allow consumers to better understand their usage, make informed energy decisions, as well as enable us to play a different role in helping to stabilize the grill, grid, and to lower infrastructure costs as well. And most importantly, and I've underlined it, put an exclamation, is we're paying for these. These will be rate-based, so all of us here, residents and businesses, will pay for all of the improvements that are associated with modernizing the electric grid. So as rate payers, we should know what are we buying, and do we want what we're buying, and is there something more or less, and have more of a dialogue on the decisions that are being, will be debated at the Department of Public Utilities. So what could it do for us? It could, most importantly, and this is the great thing about the EverSource plan, it will improve system stability and resiliency. So stability is, technically, that means how many outages we have. Will the lights stay on? Will the power always flow? And resiliency is, when they do go down, and they will go down, how quickly do we come back from an outage? It could also look at expanding more opportunities for renewable energy integration, whether it's your solar array on your home or your electric vehicle. Also provide more energy efficiency opportunities as well as demand response. And when I talk about demand response, we have to build our electric grid to meet, you know, electricity is constant. You have to have, you need to have the energy right when you need it, and you have to build that infrastructure to meet that constant need. For us, our peak usage is in the middle of the summer, between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM. It's hot, everybody's running the air conditioner, and the Cape and the islands are very busy. So we have to build the infrastructure to meet that maximum peak demand. And what smart grid technology is about is are there other ways, rather than building for a very small number of hours, for a small percentage of the year, maximum infrastructure cost? Are there ways that we, as consumers, can interact with the grid to lower that peak? And there are, I'll talk a little bit more in a few minutes about those options, but that's what this is about. How do we want to engage with the utility? I've talked about the ability to develop microgrids, but it's all about local control and what role we, as consumers, want to play. And what the role we decide to play will determine and should determine what gets put in place relative to a smart grid. So the Department of Public Utilities gave each of the EDCs four directives in their grid mod plans. They said, number one, your plan should reduce the effect of outages. That means the number of outages and how long you're without power. It should optimize demand, that's what I was talking about, lowering that peak usage, including reducing system and customer cost. Because you can build to meet that demand, or you can try other alternatives engaging consumers so that you don't need to build to that maximum infrastructure. infrastructure. We have to make those decisions and make those choices. They also require to integrate distributed energy resources, to make sure that the system is designed so that enables residents and small businesses to install and integrate PV and other small renewable resources. And then, the fourth is to improve workforce asset and, workforce and asset management. And I'll give you a great example about the city of Chicago, but what that means is how can we control costs and lower costs that are built into the rates through a smart grid. Next. A big piece of a smart grid are something called smart meters. And in the department order, they required all of the EDCs to reach advanced metering functionality within five years of the plan approval, or to have a business case as to why we can't. And AMF is real, is a smart meter. It's a, it's a technology used to get smart meters, and that is really what is at the crux of the conversation and the decision-making for us as consumers. And what is a smart meter? It collects customers' interval usage data in near or real time, so that you would know when your electricity is being used. Right now, we get a bill once a month that shows how many kilowatt-hours we used for that month, but we don't know what day we used them on, what hour we used them on. And electricity is procured, it's a commodity. There are times when electricity is more expensive than right now. It's very inexpensive right now for electricity. You should be charged. If you had a vehicle, you would want to charge it now. So, we, but we don't know that, because we don't have access to that type of information about what's happening in our own homes. And smart meters also provide information on automated outage and restoration notification. They let you know through your smartphone, or through other, another technology, when, when an outage occurs, especially if you're not home, and how long will be, you'll be down. Gives, again, talked about two-way communication, and communication with control of household appliances. Almost all of our appliances today that are new are hardwired to be controlled remotely. Refrigerators, thermostats, washing machines can all be pre-programmed to run at different times of the day. There are thermostats on, anybody have a smartphone that has the ability to control what's happening through either a Nest thermostat or a programmable Wi-Fi thermostat? So, there you go. I want one of those, but anyway, that technology is out there, but you really don't have the next piece of the puzzle, which is how do you, as a consumer, benefit from that financially? It's really amazing, when you think about our phones, and how fast, what's driving change, is, what's driving the change in this industry is what's happening outside of the industry, not what's happening within the electric utility industry. It's all of the ancillary services that are, that are prompting these changes. So, next slide. So, Eversource, as I said, filed their proposal in August of 2015. They believe that the consumers are the center of their plan, but what the plan is, is actually a very conservative grid-facing approach. They emphasize incremental investments, and it's very heavily focused on reliability and resiliency, which is not a bad thing. But what it doesn't focus on are downplays, the benefits of giving consumers greater access to information and pricing transparency. And this is most obvious through the fact that they are not rolling out universally smart meters. If you want a smart meter, you'll have to opt-in, and that comes with monthly cellular charges, so it will cost you, as a consumer, to participate in these technologies. And even, you know, and it's not an issue in Falmouth, but I've spoken on the Vineyard and on the Outer Cape, they have issues with cellular technology. They don't have great cellphone signals, so that technology is problematic. It's not something that's even available to all of the customer base within the territory. Next slide. So, I just have a couple of, a few more slides to walk through. So, I talked about their proposal. It's $496.4 million, and staff, we did have to read it, and we went through it, presented this to the board, and we broke it down, it's broken down into these big categories. Smart and integrated grid is all about, it's the biggest chunk of their plan, and it caused the biggest area of concern for the Governing Board, because it's almost, it's almost $172 million. And what's in here, and what does that mean, smart and integrated grid? It's all about automation, upgrades to substations, routers, system feeders, and when we, when we really dug into this, the majority of those dollars are for infrastructure upgrades and underground networks. Well, the Cape and the Vineyard don't have underground networks. Those areas exist in large cities, such as Springfield and the Boston area. The resilient grid, when we, is, they have a big chunk of money in what we consider to be, what should be, standard operation and maintenance. Double pole removal, stray voltage requirements, manhole inspections, advanced, enhanced tree trimming make up a big portion of that $150 million. Customer engagement, this is what we talked about with smart meters and opt-in, and then the enabling investments is also the cellular network. So, the biggest two chunks of their spending plan have raised some significant concerns for the Governing Board. In summary, so the plan, as I said, it will provide system operators much greater visibility, so you're going to get resiliency and reliability, but it's on the utility side of the fence. It's not on the customer side of the fence. And we will see less outages and shorter outages as a result of these things, so there are some really good components of their plan. Our concerns right now, it's utility-centric, meaning, again, mostly all of these improvements are on the utility-facing side, not on the customer side. There is no universal AMI, very limited customer engagement. I, they said that they reached out, but we've, if it wasn't for the board conducting public forums and meeting with the towns, not many people are aware that this is actually happening, this is being discussed. And then, no cost allocation according to benefits. That goes to that $171 million. Where, where are those improvements being made? Are we, as ratepayers on the Cape, being charged and paying for improvements that will be in the 128 corridor, as well as the inclusion of the core utility functions in what is and should be a capital improvement plan? And also, they limit, the limits the potential for smart metering, and are the TVR program, we're actually thinking it doesn't even meet the DPU requirement, but that'll be up to the department to decide. Next. So, high-level comparison, you've got National Grid, who filed a $1 billion plan, so it's a billion-dollar plan, and it is the exact, it's twice as much as Eversource. And what they've done is, they see their, their role very, very differently. They've embraced the idea of being the utility of the future, and why is, because they see business opportunities, the ability to market different things to us as all electric ratepayers, but allow a better communication where they will be able to sell and offer their products to customers who are interested in that. So, they based their plan, they did a, an AMI, a smart meter pilot, in the city of Worcester, to approximately 15,000 customers that were enrolled in smart meters and time of use rates, and they did it for several year, over a year. The results, when they evaluated that, there's that customer saved. They saved on deferring infrastructure upgrades, and consumers save by shifting and being more knowledgeable of their electricity. And that's what they based their plan. Eversource, on the other hand, does not believe that residential and small businesses want to participate in time of use rates or smart meterings. And that may be the case. Customers may want to just interface once a month, but why we're here is because we don't think that enough people have had this conversation, or are aware of what the issue's all about. So, if you have, if we went fast forward five years from now, if the two plans were approved, what you would see is on the Cape or Vineyard, you would have, as a customer, you may have increased reliability from the grid fortification. You will have no, no or minimal insight onto real-time energy use patterns, seeing only our total KWH per month, and we will be unable to receive or respond to real-time pricing signals, and will have few opportunities to reduce costs by shifting usage. The National Grid plan is, is the exact opposite. We, they will have more stable, demand-optimized grid, and benefit from real-time outage restoration and notification to their utility through their meter, so more customer engagement, better understanding of how you use electricity, and the ability to receive real-time pricing signals, and to potentially, if you choose, to benefit from those by shifting usage. So, Massachusetts is not leading the way here. Across the nation, there have been over 60 million smart meters installed throughout the country. The two examples, Baltimore Gas and Electric began installing smart meters in 2012, and there was actually a letter in today's paper about that. They've saved $2, $2.50 in benefits for every dollar spent. Smart meters and the Baltimore Gas and Electric Plan was able to lower their overall infrastructure costs by having, shifting demand. So, rates, we will all see increasing rates. I don't want anyone to think, by not doing anything, that rates are not going to go up. The question is, can you minimize the amount that they're going up by lowering the demand and not meeting to that infrastructure cost? And that's really important, that takeaway, is that these plans, they're expensive, we'll pay for them, and they will have rate impacts. It's really, how do we want to engage? They have energy savings days. This past summer, they had over 700,000 participants. Basically, you get a message, either a text message or an email, that encourages you to reduce your electric use. Doesn't matter how you do it, during a certain period of time, it's up to the consumer, and for doing that, they receive a $7.26 bill credit for participating in the events. Commonwealth Edison, that was the example I talked about earlier, they installed and are still rolling out, but installed 2.5 million smart meters. 2015 was their best reliability year ever, largely due to automatic outage notification. They knew, and the big one here is the $3 million saved in truck rolls. So, that means that they knew, because it was an automated outage, where to send the crew, and how many trucks to send, rather than doing a hunt and peck. They knew exactly where that had to go to fix that, and that saved ratepayers $3 million in truck rolls from not having to send out lots of crews. And the last slide. So, as consumers, do we want to continue to interact with our utility only on a, once a month, in the form of the bill? And that's okay. That's an option. You can choose to do it either way, if you have a smart meter. There's not, we're not, nobody's advocating mandatory participation. Or do we have to, or do we want to have a more thorough understanding, a deeper understanding of how we use electricity, and when? Do we want to manage our usage and demand? And do we want to be incentivized to contribute to grid stability and lowering infrastructure costs? Because that's what it's about. It's not about preventing them. It's trying to see, are there ways to lower those costs? And a perfect example are electric vehicles, EV, electric vehicles are basically batteries on wheels, on four wheels. And with the ability and the advancement of smart metering and smart technology, you have the ability to, when prices are low, like in the evening, to charge your vehicle, and then to be able to discharge and sell it back to the grid when real-time prices are high. And, you know, this kind of sounds like far out, maybe it's not, we're not quite there, but by the time, five years, these cars get smarter, the charging stations get better, the battery life gets stronger. So, again, what we're putting in place isn't maybe something we're going to turn in tomorrow and start charging vehicles. We're setting up the infrastructure that's five, 10, 15, and 20 years out there. And then, the other one is setting your thermostat to precool your house. So, rather than having it turned on when you get off the beach at 4:00 in the afternoon, pre-cooling your house earlier in the day and not using that, air conditioning, HVAC, all with thermal storage, the ability to precool the water that runs through your air conditioner will be commonplace over the next two to five years, not only for businesses, which is an option now, but for homeowners as well. And I think that was, this might be my last slide, oh, this is the last slide. So, the timeline and the snapshot, plans been filed, they were updated this past May. The Cape Light Compact, with the direction of the board intervened, were involved in the proceeding. We have issued a series of IRs, which are information requests, asking for more information. One of the key things that we've heard from our public forums and other selectman meetings is customers are interested in smart meters, but they want to know, what does it cost? And we can't find that in the filing, because they said they weren't doing it, so they didn't give us the cost. So, that's the type of information that we were able to extract. And we will come back with an IR, asking, what will it cost to roll out smart meters across, if you were to do that, across your service territory? In August of 2016, the procedural schedule was suspended by the department, which actually turned out to be a good thing, because it gave us more time to engage with the public and to hold forums and solicit input. I don't think this is really my last slide. Next steps, continue to get, ask IRs, engage, inform consumers, try and engage people about the subject matter, and then, for the board, to develop positions based on that input, and what do we want to see? And then communicate that to the Department of Public Utilities. We have a brief survey on our website that promises, really 10 questions. Again, we're asking, what is it that you want to see? How much would you pay for a smart meter? Where is that pain point? Because we don't know, because they didn't tell us. So, again, if you have, if you're interested in this subject matter, I'd encourage you to take the survey, because, again, that helps the board. If everybody says, no, we're not interested, that, that's the direction to the Cape Light Compact Board about some of these results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Thank you, it was a very thorough presentation.
I have one question. So, I've seen on the internet, people using their smartphones to look up and see, what's the rate right now? Should I do my laundry, or wait till a little later? And what percentage of the modern world has that currently? Do you know? Is there any, any guess, or just?
So, in Baltimore territory, there were 700,000 customers in the Baltimore Gas and Electric territory who participated in that. And there are varying degrees of participating in that, meaning that some of them went on time of use rates, where they, they know exactly what the electricity costs that hour, and they consciously shift, and they use electric, so they are very price-responsive. There are other customers who, just because they have the ability, it's a flat rate, just like we pay now, but they reduce their kilowatt-hour during a certain window of time, and they get an incentive for that. So, depending upon what territory and where it is, there are lots of people participating in that. There were 15,000 customers in Worcester that just finished that. A lot of the larger-scale businesses in the, in Massachusetts participate in that now. The base, for instance, has, I'd be dating myself, when they had just diesel gen sets, they had the ability, when they got a call from ISO New England, to shift load, to turn, to run on diesel gen sets and not buy off-the-grid. So, it depends. Large commercial customers have been doing this for quite some time, and we're starting to see more and more consumers who are interested and who follow it. I think we saw four people in the audience who were paying close attention to what they're using. And in, those who own PV, and any, which is solar, what we'll see next is the ability to have, whether it's a Tesla Powerwall or another battery storage in Vermont. Green Mountain Powers during this fabulous pilot that we're looking at very closely, where for, homeowner business with a small PV system, they installed, they gave you a battery power pack in their target area free, if you let them use that for demand, so that they could call on that to help lower their peak. So, it's happening all around us, and it's very early in the game, so to speak, but this is a conversation about making sure that opportunities don't get cut off.
See, I can see their reluctance to invest in technology like this, but it wouldn't seem to be that much technology required to let us know what the rates are and when.
It's a meter. It's, that's all about the meter.
Hmm, okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Thank you very much.
Good night, David.
Next item on our agenda is a vote to reconsider the senior center site, and I just want to make sure everyone understands the process here. The first item is a vote among the board. It is not for debate either among the board or for the public. It is merely, do we want to reconsider? After that vote, if we do decide to reconsider, we will then have a discussion that will include both the board and the public comment at that point. So, question for the board is, do you feel that we have enough information to warrant reconsideration of the senior center site?
So moved.
Your motion, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose done. So, we will be reconsidering the senior center site. To start off with the discussion, I would like to give a little bit of a background. Part of the reason, I think, for the reconsideration is there has been some concern about the choice of Site 3 that would involve the lacrosse field hockey field. I want to be very clear, because there is some miscommunication out there, that if we choose that site, and we very well may come back to it, the intention all along was to make sure that that site would not, the senior center would not get started until a new field was in place and ready to play. It is not taking a field away from anyone. We weren't taking a field away from the, in Site 2, but it was building a new field first before the senior center got started. I just want to be very clear on that. I also want to be very clear, because there has been concern that the school department has not been as supportive as this, and certainly from day one, they have stayed with the same sentiment, that the school committee is very eager to support what choice we make for the site, and they will work with us if it is on the school property, and that has not changed in any way whatsoever. With that being said, let's, where do you guys like to head in our discussion? With that being said, let's, where do you guys like to head in our discussion?
I'd be happy to review the process that was in place, just to see how we got to this point, because I think a lot of people are coming late to the conversation and they're...
Do you have that slide, Mr. Sussel?
Yes.
So in the years between 2003 and 2009, there was a lot of documentation, worked with the town leaders, working with the council on aging, investigating the possibility of a new senior center. So this started back in 2003. 2013, the town manager, the board of selectmen, and council aging reps met to discuss potential land opportunities. And since then, we have been having, you can see a long list of meetings, to look into what would be the right site, what are the needs of this senior center, and really trying to make sure that we move forward. One of my concerns about our discussion about the senior center is, the senior center is something we need to do. The senior center is something that we need to come forward as a community and make happen. This does not need to be something that the town is fighting about. This town needs to embrace for our seniors, get behind, make a decision, and agree that we need to have it happen. And one of my concerns, and I'm a little distressed, is it's become a contentious issue that had no business being contentious. And I'll take responsibility from the board of selectmen's point of view, when Site 2, or when Site 3 was put forward for the lacrosse and field hockey site. The school community was very clear with us in the spring that there could be an emotional reaction to us looking at that site. And back in September, when we chose it, I know I did not bring that as a reminder to our board, that that was giving a concern, and I think that was a mistake on my part. But I'm very sorry, this has become something that people are fighting about, because this is not something that should be a fight. This should be something that we are rejoicing, celebrating, and moving forward as something that we can all be happy about, a need that the town really needs. So you've seen the law of meetings we've had, we are now in a position of trying to figure out where the right place is for the senior center that the town desperately needs. And thank you, Mr. Brown, for the question. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I begin to have, by the way, agree with you 100%. We ought to be able to get behind replacing the senior center. It's definitely something that needs to be done. And I don't think there's any question anybody's mind about that. But for me, the question has come, and it comes from a lot of input from a lot of citizens who are basically saying, I'm a senior citizen, I never go there. When I took a look at the number, percentage of senior citizens that are actually going to use that facility, it turned out to be, you know, 10% or less of the senior population. So that began to raise questions in my mind. Is this a financially responsible thing for us to do? If we're only looking at the senior center need, and is the $10 million that we're investing in it targeting a very small fraction of the senior community, shouldn't we be looking at broadening what we're actually going to put into a facility like that? So that's why I was arguing for, including human services facility, for which we pay $26,000 a year right now to rent space for those offices. Shouldn't we be thinking about Veterans Administration, both of which are complementary services to the senior population? And so it made me back up and say, can we find a more targeted way of serving that community? And the other side of it became the issue of accessibility to the seniors that really need these services, and is putting it on the high school site, making it less accessible, therefore less likely to be used as a service, shouldn't it be, as I argued before, put closer to the center of town, along transportation, regular route transportation access? If the senior center were put up on the high school campus in any of the locations that were examined, you're going to have to add additional vans, because already the van service, as I understand, is pretty book tight. Well, that additional distance is going to require more time. That's an additional van, additional driver, people less likely to drive out there, because it's further from grocery shopping, going to Walmart, and to all the other variety stores that they might need to. It just becomes an accessibility issue, which made me start to think about, how, what part of our community are we servicing? And are we actually looking out for the best interest of those citizens who will use the service center facility? So that's what began to make me, and I have to say that, with rare exception, the people that have approached me over the last two months, that basically said, you know, I'm not in favor of this. And I think it's the first time that people started tuning in on it and asking that question, is this what I want my real estate tax dollars to be invested in? Can't we be smarter about this? Can't we target a broader need and maybe more critical needs when we make this kind of an investment in a facility on behalf of the town? So that's where I am, that's why I think we need to reconsider this. And I think we need to ask ourselves, was the Coalition on Aging, was the Site Selection Committee really looking at needs that are in the best interest of our investment in a senior center and its location?
Mr. Spargah?
So I think, and I agree with a lot of what Mr. Patterson is saying, I think that the Council on Aging, their duty is really to the people that they serve. And they did really an enormous amount of work, and they're on the front lines, and they really are seeing who's attending, and the goal is certainly to broaden the base of the people that will be using the facility. So I think that they, I think that the Council on Aging did what they were supposed to do, which was look at who they serve and look for their best interests. Their job isn't sort of the fiduciary best interests of the town, theirs is kind of a specific target. So I think they did really tremendous work, as did the Site Selection Committee. It's been a very long process. And I understand, everybody's really busy in life, and we don't tune into all of these things, sometimes until we start hearing decisions and numbers. But this has gone on for a long time, and certainly a lot of people in this room have weighed in at other points in it. I come at it, and I think I said this before when we had our first vote, I do think looking at this as an investment, how do we maximize this investment, which wherever it goes, is a substantial investment. None of the numbers are small. All of the sites carry price tags somewhere around $8 to $10 million. That's a substantial investment. And this, I think the town has a lot of needs, and certainly the needs of our seniors are extremely important. But I think we can serve a number of needs by citing this facility somewhere where it is, number one, addressing those issues of access. I think that there are access issues with that, the site at the high school, because it's not on a bus line, it's not straight downtown, it's not easy, there aren't sidewalks that you could take all the way there from the middle of town, as we have some more, you know, we have better sidewalks, sort of downtown Falmouth. So I think there are some access issues, and I think that we could, we know the rec center is a place that is going to require some updating. We've had that conversation, we've heard that a bit. And I do think that combining those two, those two really important needs, not only is a good use of our public funds, but I think it speaks more broadly to trying to bring together and create something that is a community center. You have a piece that's designated for recreation, and all the things that go on there now would continue and maybe grow. And then you have activities that are specifically geared for the very significant and important needs of our seniors. We talked about what goes on at the senior center. The programming, you know, it's not things that are just for fun. Really important, necessary activities go on at that senior center, and they need to be supported. And I think that that investment at the Gus Canty allows for not only a broadening of the services for our seniors and a better facility than they're in now, but perhaps a different, a shift in the way we view bringing together kind of intergenerational and community activities, rather than really segmenting what I think are, you know, there's a beauty in something that's a community center, that serves people of all ages throughout, you know, your stages of life. And so I still, I want to emphasize that I think what the Council on Aging did, they did what they were supposed to do. And I think they worked really hard, so I want to respect their decision. But when I look at it from the charge that we get, which includes sort of a financial picture, I still feel pretty strongly about the Gus Canty.
I know when I originally came in for a meeting a month and a half ago, I was very strongly pushing for Site 4, which was at the high school site, that involved no replacement of fields. And that's where I came into that meeting. I was convinced by the Council on Aging's recommendation of their preference for Site 3. A piece of information that I now have, that came out about a month and a half ago, is that the school department has put it in their five-year capital plan to request moving the football field from downtown out to the high school. And they've put that a few years out, I think, in respect as to what our financial obligations are. I think if we decide to jump on the bandwagon with that focus and say, actually, we may not be able to find some capital to move that process earlier, we could tie this all into one big piece, where the high school football field could move away from Gus Canty, could give us a little bit more space at that area to really be able to do. And I actually completely agree with the idea of one community center. I think it's very important that we build a center here that is the senior center.
Definitely.
And connected to the teen center, but make sure, I just think that our seniors are going to say, no. There are some times they are going to feel intimidated by the 17, 18-year-olds in a way, that think, they're not going to want to use the same bathroom, that they're going to want to have a place that's really theirs, and I think they deserve that. But I think there can be some shared spaces, some shared uses. So in the gymnasium, there's no reason to create two different gymnasiums, one for the seniors and one for the teens in town, I think they can share that. So I'm certainly being pushed much more in the direction of considering that as an option.
And I do mean, I'm sorry, just to clarify, I do mean, I don't mean we're just sort of lumping everything together. I, you know, we have sort of the, you know, the options that have been put out as to what that could look like. I mean a substantial addition to the Gus Canty, but again, there would be space that's separate, we talked about that in the program report, it's required to really be separate for the services that are provided to our seniors, so.
Brown?
So the reason I chose Site 3 primarily was out of respect for the work that the committee had done. The second reason is, it affords us the ability to expand and partner with another organization like, there's a push for YMCA, there's another group called Falmouth Aquatics, which we're all aware of. I just envision this senior center site, whether it's where the field is or another place on that campus, mostly because it's such a large space and lends itself well to a neighboring facility. I think that could be a great option for us, and having a pool facility on a high school property could allow for a swimming team at the high school, after-school activities. So I think it's like the Cadillac of the choices. I understand the attachment to a volunteer organization putting a field in. I certainly would be upset if somebody wanted to put a new facility on the playground that we volunteered to build. I mean, when you have an effort like that, you become attached to it, and you don't want to see it taken out of service. So, you know, I'd be amenable to another location that didn't involve the field, if it's that important to the people that are using it. I saw it as an upgrade for them, because it was my understanding from the report that the field was maybe of lesser quality than what a professionally engineered field might have been. So that was my first thinking, that the new field would be superior. So I thought it would be welcomed, but I understand now the point of the, you know, the emotional attachment to it. So if we're going to choose a different site, I would like it to be a site that gives these other potential partnerships a chance, because I just envision that as a great thing for the town.
Mr. Brown?
I certainly can sign on to most of what everyone has said so far, but I was kind of taken by your term, you know, a Cadillac choice. Because in a way, that was the mandate of the original committee, in the sense of, you know, this is a special needs population, just the way children are a special needs population, you know, as we all age, you know, things are going to change, you're going to get slower, you might, you know, have needs for special, you know, certain doctors or all kinds of things that the senior center already handles. You know, when you say, the committee made a point of saying, we need our own space. You know, there's something, you know, ages ago, when you look at the way our elderly were really revered, I mean, they were, you know, their wisdom, their experience, that I think was part of the charge of the original committee. And it was, for this population, which has been waiting 10 years, as is said to us, we want to know what's best for them, and what would really be the best choice. And this board, after having asked a committee to bring that idea forward, went with the committee's recommendation. And so that was the original Site 3, Site 3 vote. And I think, just as Mr. Brown and the chair has mentioned, it has, after that point, been very accurately, excellently, loudly brought to our attention, that that particular site may have some, you know, special elements that we weren't entirely aware of, and we sure as heck are now. So in that light, I think we have to look at the committee's original mandate, find the best site for our population who has waited so long and who really has some special needs, you know, just the way middle-aged folks do and young folks do. We're weighing that against fiscal responsibility. What is a municipality's mandate? It's really to, it's not to build for what may happen in the future, it's to serve a current need. I mean, that's really the, you know, more of the focus. And of course, just the way in our own families, we economize, we, you know, try to, you know, get things that maybe have two purposes. So that, in this case, I think the board is correctly looking at the Site Selection Committee's choice through the additional lens that we have to, which is fiscal responsibility. Given that, I mean, I'm most persuaded by Mr. Brown's argument in terms of, you know, we know the Gus Canty Center needs some updates. Sorry, I have allergies. And, you know, but that's not what we're looking at right now. What we're looking at right now is we've got a mandate to build a new senior center. And I think that Site 4 does not involve any fields, it's a big enough site where there's outdoor trails and, you know, potential for other recreation, whether it's a pool or otherwise, so I think we should give that consideration tonight.
Okay, before we have any more debate, I want to give the public a chance to give us some comment, and then we'll continue our debate beyond there. Is there someone like, sorry, here, Mr. Croney?
Thank you.
Again, I think there are a lot of people who'd like to speak, and I'd like to give everyone a chance to, so if you can keep your comments brief, and if you hear your comment already said by somebody else, you can refrain from making that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Walter Croney, Precinct 3. I wanted to bring to the selectmen's attention a factor I don't think either was considered or maybe given enough consideration in terms of locating another building on the high school campus. In my opinion, having been a former athletic director and high school coach, it should be a town priority to move all of the athletic fields out to the site of the high school. That's what every other public high school has. Your reasons are logical. Not only the convenience, the cost of busing students back and forth to baseball and football practices, and a potential safety factor. If students are driving themselves and they have a tough practice or a tough game, they get in an accident, that could be a bad situation. So my point is, I think it should be a town priority to have all the fields, baseball and football, eventually moved out to the high school. Now with that in mind, I was kind of shocked to find out that although a lot of people agreed with that, no one had ever put together a formal plan on what that would look like. So I got together, again, with my past background with the athletic director, and we walked the whole territory and looked at what would be the potential for laying out all of those fields, with practice fields, out at the high school. And here's the proof statement. Now, the problem is, once we did it, that would take up every square foot of land to do that. So there is no space available for another building, if you want to have that as a town objective, to move all the fields out there. And again, I think it should be a town objective, and I think Mr. Jones alluded to that. That would include baseball, that would include practice fields. And the good news is, and let me state it upfront, I'm in favor of a senior center at a suitable location as quickly as we can do it. So I'm not, this is not in opposition to that by any means. But I think it should also be a town priority to move those fields out there. So I think you've got two priorities that are kind of, you know, banging heads here if you pick that particular site. And again, just as an addendum, I would like to go with Mr. Jones' suggestion, that hopefully this becomes a higher priority for the town to allocate funds to move those fields out there. And again, maybe if you went with this Canty situation and you could relocate the football field, that would be a big first step in that direction, so.
Thank you.
So I just don't think people have given enough consideration to the need for relocating those fields. And again, if you do, there is no square footage available to put a swimming pool, a building, or anything else out there to get that done. So hopefully that becomes a factor.
Mr. Croney, would you share your diagram with the board?
Well, I haven't put it before the school committee for a final vote yet, but just to let you know, we did do it. And that's how it would look. So that's the first step. The second step is obviously to get a cost estimate, what it would cost, and then put it in the capital plan to get it done. But as you can see, that takes into account moving all the fields out there and the practice fields, a lot of the baseball fields.
It doesn't touch that. It doesn't touch Site Four, the way planning we have right now, so I mean, there's a lot of space backwards to Site Four.
Well, it would take up pretty much most of the, yeah, it might not Site Four, you might try.
Right.
But it would take up pretty much all of the square foot.
I understand.
I will say that I discounted Gus Canty because of the failure of them to include moving the football program in the preliminary discussion.
In the front row here, Ms. Ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Courtney Lima. I am the field hockey coach at Falmouth High School. And Mr. Jones, you noted that this was definitely an emotional decision, and I think what stands behind me right here is very emotional. These girls haven't stopped at home yet. They came right from their game this evening, and they're here because they don't want to lose their field to a senior center. Now, with that being said, they're not opposed to a senior center, and I speak on their behalf. I believe that this is a community that has really great opportunities to provide with both generations, young and those who are aging. I think that with all of the people that are in this town and willing to make a senior center worthwhile, we could work together to find something that is suitable for everybody in this district. I just ask that you take the time and reconsider different locations so that these girls standing behind me know that their efforts haven't gone for no reason. There are girls here who are eighteen years old, who they had older siblings at eight years old, out there digging fields, volunteering their hours with their parents, their guardians, and those around them. We just ask, as a community, field hockey, lacrosse, cross-country, and tennis. It's not just field hockey and lacrosse that you will be taking their field. There are other opportunities for other athletic teams up there. Please reconsider where you would like to put the senior center. Thank you.
Okay. I'd just like to respond a little bit to this, because one of the reasons why I voted for Site Three is, as a lacrosse coach and knowing the game of field hockey fairly well, at that point, it seemed to me as a possibility of being able to put a turf field. And those are two sports that really could benefit field hockey. I know particularly the advantages to playing on a really well-manicured grass field or turf can make it a very different game than a field that is bumpier than others. And so that was the reason I was looking to that as a way of actually enhancing the sport for both field hockey and lacrosse. It is now, I've been told, that turf is not necessarily an option that we want to be considering, and was not, it's a fifty-fifty call as to whether it is better or not. And so that's another reason why I'm saying, okay, I'm not going to push that as forward as an option. Ms. Burke, do you want to comment?
I do, I will comment, and.
First, I want to thank you for reconsidering it, and I apologize if it wasn't clear that...
Kathleen, could you identify yourself?
Sure. Kathleen Burke, athletic director at Falmouth High School for twenty-two years now, and I have wanted to have all of our athletic facilities on-site for at least twenty-two years. Obviously, there's a lot of logistical issues, but there's a lot of benefits to having all your athletic facilities on-site. And I guess that's my caution. No matter what site you choose at the high school, it's going to limit the future development of athletic fields. The terrain gets very rough at the high school. The reason you have field hockey and lacrosse here tonight is because that was the last site that was selected. You would have had soccer people here if you'd gone with Option One. And I'm concerned that if you're looking at Option Four, and I'm not really even sure where that is, I'm not privy to this yet, there are other issues up there. So I think before you go forward with selecting a site at the high school, you want to make sure you've looked at the impact it will have on the students and the athletic programs, but also access to that facility. And that was one of the major concerns when this discussion started eight, ten years ago. If you have traffic coming in and out of the high school or access from Old Campus Drive, that's a whole 'nother issue. But right now, whether it's the field hockey and girls' lacrosse field or the soccer field, it has a negative impact on the athletic program if you take any of our existing fields, build a new facility, and then we have to relocate that field. You saw the price tag for relocating the soccer field. It was almost a million dollars. It was somewhere between eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars to construct a new soccer field. The field hockey field, girls' lacrosse field, is a field and a half. So, and you're still looking at that same terrain behind the high school. It's, you know, very rough terrain. It would be very expensive to build a field back there. I think we do need to explore that option, but for the high school athletic programs. That should be the priority on that particular site. Your issue, your question about the turf field, yes, field hockey would love to play on a turf field, and girls' lacrosse, boys' lacrosse, and that's why we brought that proposal forward two years ago. But if you build one, if you replace the current field hockey girls' lacrosse field with a turf field, that means there's no place for football to come up, there's no place for soccer to play, or boys' lacrosse. Field hockey would have to have a field to practice on every day. So if you build a new turf field hockey field, then the other fall programs would not have access to it. Their practice field would be gone. Their grass field would be gone. So I just, you know, before you move forward looking at any more sites, there's going to be issues with selecting any site at the high school. It's going to impact some other group, and there are limitations to what's buildable up there.
Just to be clear, there was no plan of putting the turf field on the practice fields that's up there right now. It would be putting it in a new spot. It would not be putting it on, it would not take away those practice fields we talked about. It would be a brand-new site, and they're just...
And I'd be glad to look at that. I know the school committee has been very supportive of the senior center since we started this process a couple of years ago. As long as they, we replace what we have, that's been kind of the mantra all along. The problem is, it gets very expensive. It adds a lot of money, at least a million dollars, to create a new field in the wooded area behind the school. So whatever price tag is on the senior center, there's additional costs when you start clearing land and building access roads. All right? So I'm glad to get into questions, but these girls probably need to get home. They went to school at seven o'clock this morning. They had a field hockey game. The varsity team beat Cohasset this afternoon. I don't know, there's one spokesman, I think Kate or one of the seniors just wanted to say something, and then I think the discussion may go on a bit more, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we make a point that the cost for the field is included in the budget for that location?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, well, let's wait till you're up here.
Hi, my name is Kate Hamilton. I'm a senior at Falmouth High School. I'm also a co-captain of both the varsity field hockey and lacrosse team. Previously, I've written a letter to the editor discussing the importance that this field has to us. I've been on each of these varsity teams for four years, so I've seen a lot of history come through. As I've spent most of my high school and youth career on this field, I've come to appreciate and respect everything that this field has brought to our community and sports programs throughout the town. What's interesting to me is it's not only the present former athletes that have a problem with the senior center coming on this field, but also many seniors would like to see a different location of the senior center. I urge the community to work together to find a viable alternative to put the new senior center on. I know there is a committee that has put in a lot of hard work and effort into finding different locations, but I'm not aware of all of them. But I can say on behalf of this team and other teams at Falmouth High School that we're willing to help find a new location and work with the seniors and you guys to figure a better alternative for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you're anyone's videotaping, please, you need permission to be able to videotape, and at least make sure we let other people know, because I know has. Yes, sir?
So, my name is Mike Faulkner, I'm in Precinct Four. You're going to hear a lot from people in the room tonight that are very passionate about what kids do and everything, and I'm encouraged to hear what the board just, I think, decided, which is maybe a reconsideration of the field. But I'm disappointed to hear a couple of things. I came tonight expecting to hear a fairly negative message from the board, based on the press that was around this and how it was decided. But I want to make something clear. This shouldn't be based, Mr. Brown, on an emotional decision that these girls are bringing in front of you tonight. That's not the point here. If you look at our kids, they raise money for every sport. The fact that they helped facilitate the improvements of this field, it's kind of shameful on the town's part. They have car washes, fundraisers. It's every day they're turning around and having to sell something to fund our sports in this town. So if this decision is being reversed on emotion and what's being brought in front of you, it shouldn't be. It should be what Mr. Patterson said, and what Ms. Braga said, and what some of you shared. It should be a comprehensive decision as to how we want to run our community. And the tie between our senior community and our student community can be built through this decision. You mentioned it was, I think your word was, that it was a contentious issue or something to that effect. It was a contentious issue by the manner in which it was raised. There was quotes in the paper saying, "The decision was rushed. Funding isn't final. It has to go to a vote at either town meeting or maybe a ballot initiative." This is not a thought-through plan, and the only reason it's being thought through right now is standing behind me, and it's in this room. And I think this is more of a wake-up call, that if the town really wants to serve our seniors, look, we're going to be there. I want to live my life in this town. I would love the best senior center possible, the most innovative, but also the most embracing of our community. Put our seniors where they can contribute, put our students where they contribute. You can serve both here. You don't have to make a decision between the two. This isn't Solomon's Baby. This is simple. Pick a site that benefits everybody. Think it through, figure out how to fund it. It's a huge capital project. Our last one didn't go too well, and these kids are in it every day. That wasn't thought through. This one can be, okay? Just put the thought behind it, build a comprehensive plan, and I think that's what everybody's really asking of you. It's not about this one field. It's about the ultimate destiny of how you're going to connect those two parts of our community. And everybody else is going to tell you why the field is, so I don't need to speak for them. But think that part through. That's what I ask of you.
We're actually trying to have this debate that is no longer about the field, but is about the site. So I would hope that we could actually move beyond that one topic.
Can I just quickly just respond? I certainly agree with a lot of the points just raised in that it can be, this can be a real coming together. But I think we just need to emphasize that this isn't a rush process. In fact, the criticism has been that it's gone on for too long. This has gone on for more than a decade. It has involved dozens of folks in this town, really volunteering hundreds of hours. All the numbers are known, but any project has to go before, before all of us for a vote because the numbers are the size that would require the town to vote on it. So I certainly understand what I think Chairman Jones was saying, is that we, our job is to hear from people. If we make a decision and people, whatever motivates them, money, emotion, respond, our job is to hear that and then perhaps open that discussion back up. So, though I just take issue with the one point, I don't think it's been a rushed process. It may feel like that, the way it's presented in the paper at the end, but it really has gone on for almost a decade.
So, in fairness, if you're going to say that, I'm actually quoting Mr. Jones's statement.
You need to go to the podium and be recognized by the chair.
I lose a direct address, so I thought I could respond. I'm actually quoting what was read from the Cape Cod Times. It was either the September twentieth or September thirteenth article on the fields. I believe it was you, Mr. Jones, that said the decision was made in a rushed manner or faster than you would have liked it to have been. I do understand, though, it has been ten years, and there's a large appetite to have this completed and built. And if I were in the senior community, I would want that, right? But at the same time, it hasn't been put forth in the most productive manner, and maybe that's just the press twisting it, but I'm just working off of what I read in the paper.
Yeah, I would say I think every meeting is publicized, and we've done surveys. I mean, I just want to give credit, it's not to anyone on this table here, but actually to the folks at the Council on Aging, who have done incredible amounts of work trying to reach out to our seniors. I mean, they really have, I think, you know, gone above and beyond what we would ask of them to try to gather that information. They're not here, I don't see a lot of folks here tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. But they have done a lot of work, and I just wouldn't want that image to get out there that they haven't done that.
Well, point well made, and it's not, my intention isn't to disparage the work that's been put into this. I actually read the site study and the comprehensive planning study. It's well-written, and it does, though, however, cite multiple options. And I think in this option, I would question, what input has the school committee had? What input have the athletic directors at the school had? And if you're saying it has really been a well-rounded discussion, I'm not hearing those parts of the discussion. I am hearing mostly Council on Aging and the senior community. I'm not hearing the other half's input on the site. So I'm going to let it go at that, and thank you.
I'm going to put forward a motion that we abandon the idea of Site Three for the senior center, and just to see if that, see what happens with that motion, and it may save some people a lot of time about whether they're going to stick around.
How about all the property on school?
No, no.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion is seconded. Any further discussion on abandoning Site Three as our option?
Um, no, I guess so.
Site Three being the field hockey girls' lacrosse field.
Yes. Field hockey being the field hockey girls' lacrosse field. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We will not be considering Site Three for the senior center this evening. We now have a lot further discussion to go, but...
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. It's a long night. It is a long night.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm staying for that, you know, we've got to get to the next one.
Yes, ma'am, if you could introduce yourself, please?
Yes. Just a little noise back there. Go ahead.
Good evening. So my name is Amy Thrasher. I have two students at Falmouth High School. Not going to get into the site that you just removed from the ballot, I'm sorry.
That microphone doesn't amplify. It just picks up for the TV, so...
Oh, okay. So I just talk really loud. Sorry. So my concerns, I support a senior center like everybody else here. I believe wholeheartedly it should go where Mr. Patterson suggested it goes, over at the admin building or the Gus Canty. It just seemed in the feasibility study, there were more issues around Gus Canty, whereas if you built a new structure at the admin building and there's plenty of space for it, it could be a project that could start very, very quickly, and there's minimal impact on existing space, existing functions, existing operations. So that, to me, and it was the lowest price option, so that seemed to be the best option for numerous reasons. But my biggest concerns, and even if you're taking the Site Three out, the other option on Brick Hill, there were feasibility studies done in the past, I mean, we're going back ten years, and that was one of the proposed sites off of Brick Hill Road, when it was proposed to put a pool facility, an ice rink with a senior center off of Brick Hill Road on that location. That was a real proposal that came through, and an actual feasibility study was done at the time, and it did not pass because it had many, many problems. Some of the problems for that particular location included parking issues, access roads that would have to be created, the topography, and also limitations on then-moving field space. Because as Ms. Burke said, the cost to moving the spaces is not seventy to eighty thousand dollars, which is in your current feasibility study. It's much higher because of these topography issues and the soil, all of the land back there, it's not a seventy to eighty thousand dollar job. And if they're saying it is now, why back then, ten years ago, did they say it was like a whole $1 million to redo field?
We've adopted that number.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So in addition to that, at the time, the school committee, the principal, Mr. Driscoll, and Kathleen Burke, and several people from our community addressed that feasibility study and that proposal, and were adamantly against it as a majority. In addition to all of the issues the feasibility study put forth, there were also safety issues. And when you talk about safety issues in the kids at the high school, the liability with Cory checks, who are the people, who are these kids are going to be around, what kind of co-mingling is going to be happening? And when you think about all of this, and if you take the time to research, the minutes of all these meetings, the actual feasibility studies that were done, the feedback from the town, I honestly think that it's very irresponsible logic to say, quote-unquote, that you're going to choose this site that can get done the quickest. Well, this isn't about what can get done the quickest. This is about what the best decision is, that we can bridge two generations together and have a successful project for this town that's not going to impact in any negative way our students at the high school or our seniors. Both are deserving of the things that they need, and they shouldn't compromise one another. I also just want to, very quickly, touch on a couple of points that came out of the feasibility study. One of them stated that the high school parking lots provide substantial overflow parking. Well, our kids pay eighty dollars a year for a sticker to park in that parking lot, and I don't know what kind of overflow parking the senior center is going to need, but it should not be overflow parking into lots where our teenagers are parking. That's their lot, that's where they park. There should be no overflow parking looked at as a benefit in your feasibility study. In addition to that, it's, the feasibility states that the high school is the best option There should be no overflow parking looked at as a benefit in your feasibility study. In addition to that, it's, the feasibility states that the high school is the best option because it has the largest amount of acreage, therefore giving you the most potential for future expansion, which to me is a huge red flag because what is the actual scope of this project? Is it what you're proposing now or is there another half of this project? And I don't think we as a community understand what the full scope of this project is. Now we're talking about pools, now we're talking about, you know, YMCA's. I mean, what is the scope of this project that you want the town to approve? And I don't think we have a full understanding of what that is when I read things like this in your feasibility study. Traffic impact, this is to me probably one of the most alarming parts of all. When you look at the traffic impact statements in the feasibility study, we are saying that, first of all, the observations were made on a Wednesday around 10:00 a.m. on June 10th, okay? Does anybody see the issue with that? Our seniors aren't there anymore and there's no sports happening at that time. So that observation should just be null and void. In addition to that, this site is proposing, this senior center is proposing 20 staffers between full-time and part-time. Part-time means they're going to be rotating throughout the day. It also is estimating 375 individuals on a daily basis coming to the senior center, which attributes to 750 trips in and out of their new parking lot, which is somewhere right off of the high school facility where our students are and our teachers are and parents are doing drop-offs. You're talking 750 additional trips a day? That is a very big number. And they also state that there are overlapping peak traffic times. That's a red flag. But the biggest red flag of all is that of all of the sites, the high school sites have inadequate site distance on the proposed driveways. So if you put all of this together, inadequate site distance for our seniors pulling in and out of, you know, their new location, peak traffic times, 375 individuals for 750 trips in and out, new drivers, high school kids, it's to me, I just see it being a recipe for a disaster. There's no logic in doing this to our high school. I don't think it benefits our seniors the way they need to thrive from this kind of a project and it absolutely has a negative impact on our students, not to mention the whole athletic field issue on top of it. So that's all I wanted to share tonight.
Anybody else? Yeah? Peter?
Peter Hargraves, Precinct Nine. I came to talk about one aspect, but what I've heard tonight adds another element and I'll keep it brief. I haven't heard anything except in the town administrator's early remarks about all the planning that went into the selection of the site. We spent $52,500 to do a quantitative analysis and what I'm really disappointed about is hearing one of the sites that was eliminated in that study because of its DNA being brought forward by several people as one of the primary contenders now, being Gus Cante Center. I don't know if it's the high school or the school administration building, but those are the only two that were recommended, those locations with a couple of sites at each location. And I think, frankly, I'll be frank with you, I'm glad the kids are, well, all the kids are gone, but I'll say, you know, you're feeding the mill for the cynical critics of our town government decision process. We have a study that says not to go to the site that now is your primary consideration. And some of you who are longer on the board will know that I have stood in defense of some of the things that have been said at town meeting. I can't defend what I'm hearing here tonight. And in the second part, I saved the positive, quasi-positive stuff for last, I appreciate the chairman's opening remarks and the administrator's review of the process that got us here, but it doesn't seem to have informed the discussion. And frankly, I think it's time for the school group. I think they're a little bit arrogant in terms of separating themselves from the community. I think there's a win-win in here if they went in and looked at what are the prospects that this gives us, because the seniors want to come to the center of gravity of town and relocate. But I'm not selling one site or another. The last comment I would like to make is, I mean, I heard some illogical discussion in justifying a different site that disturbs me and shows a lack of respect for the senior community who worked and paid taxes to build the facilities. I know that schools have 100% utilization by all the kids, or maybe 90 if you believe the statistics. And what fraction of the population of the town are those kids? What fraction of the population of the town are the seniors? And only 10% use the site? Is that because of where it's located? Would more people use it? What are the opportunities for thinking about something different? And how many people walk to the senior center? A lot of the people that I see using the senior center could just barely walk around the block in that area. So I think there's some fallacies and I think, I just hate to say that I think sometimes these are difficult decisions. In a democracy, in a democracy, the decisions can't be perfect. And I just hate to see you guys caving to a vote minority because as I said, it turns you into a pinata for the cynics of our decision-making process. So, thank you.
Ms. Cooney?
Sandra Cooney, Chairman of the Falmouth Recreation Committee. Upon hearing that the Board of Selectmen was going to reconsider the vote, members of the Recreation Committee called and asked that I put it on the agenda at our last meeting. So for the first time, we actually had a discussion amongst the Recreation Committee. And I am here tonight to tell you that all seven members attended and it was unanimous by the committee that they are in support of if you decide that the Recreation Falmouth Community Center is the spot, that we would welcome an addition for the seniors. And so I'm just here to relay that message on behalf of the committee. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
I'm Carl Evans. I'm the pastor of Christ Lutheran Church at 4U5 Brick Hill Road. We're located right about here. I've been asked on behalf of the congregation of Christ Lutheran Church to state a willingness to discuss the possibility of a Falmouth Senior Center being built on land currently owned by the church and adjacent to the school and the high school. We are, we own this plot of land right in here. The church has 10 acres total with a strip of land that potentially provide a curb cut and access from Brick Hill Road. At this time, I've been authorized to relate that the governing body of the church is interested in leasing the land to the town. This would allow for less upfront outlay for the town. We realize there are many factors to be considered, but wanted to express our interest in being of assistance to the community as this property is a budding townland and is a natural extension of the high school grounds.
Thank you. Okay. Sir in the back?
Hi, my name is Bill Borden. I'm Precinct Seven. Followed a lot of this stuff in the Falmouth Enterprise and whatever. And to be honest with you, I would like to see that you take the old Nimrod down, save the magic cannonball, and use that site for the senior center. But the other advantage of having that site is it would include parking for like Cape Cod Baseball League. When the, I went down Dillingham the other night, the football team was playing and it was just cars all over the place. So you'd have another parking lot, you know, because there'd be times that the seniors generally don't hang out. But I think it should be its own entity. I think, just like it is now, it's kind of small, but you know, that facility, I mean, it's, somebody's got to tear that thing down. It looks like hell. And I just want to say that what I've read in the paper and some other people have thought that the Nimrod should be something you should consider. I don't know what the costs are or anything else, but I think in terms of its location close to town, it's on a quiet road, it's not like it's on 28 or Kiln Road or anything else. It's in a place where seniors who don't thrive as well as the rest of the, it just, I think it would be, it's something you should consider and that's all I'm asking. So, thank you.
Susan Welicki, District Seven. I have been active in the senior center for 20 years. I think some of you are ill-informed about driving, what someone just pointed out, that there's nobody who walks to the senior center. We all drive to the senior center. We do not live in New York City or Boston. To go a couple of extra miles to the high school is not going to make that much of a difference to us. You, Mr. Patterson, said that there's only 10% use. There's only 10% use because we don't have the room. We can't play, have a...
You need to redirect your comments to me and I'll pass them on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know that. Another thing that I've noticed today is everybody has these anecdotal things. People have said to me, people have said, we don't have to go by anecdotal things. I have people saying all kinds of things to me. We had, we had 13 years of discussion about this. We have, we did research, we hired colleges to come in. It should not be anecdotal evidence. The other thing, I am active in the Massachusetts Council on Aging and I have found, people have told me what goes on in Sandwich and other places, if you have, if you share a facility, now I'm not saying that that's what you are talking about in Gus Cante, but if you share a facility where you share meeting rooms, there's going to be conflict. You cannot have that kind of sharing. And it's, I don't know about, I don't know about the gym because we don't have one now and I don't know how it would be used. But meeting rooms, you cannot share them. That is just causing a disaster. Thank you.
That's everything we've heard too.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Andrea McKnight. I'm not sure what district I'm in, but I live over on Lantern Lane. I would just, I'm actually, was for the building on the field, which I know is an anomaly and I actually coach youth lacrosse on the field. I just think the field is junk and we don't maintain it. We have a parent mowing it and a bunch of other bad things going on. I think the town was facing some serious Title IX issues because you're taking a field away from four female teams as well as youth female teams and not supplying us with other female fields, which was going to open Pandora's box for the town.
It's so unclear. We're not taking a field without, we'd first be replacing a field before we took that field.
But I understand. And all I want to say is I think it would be easier if the town looked at whatever the proposal is and looked at the next step and gave a counter-plan to whatever that is. So if we're still looking at high school fields and we are going to take some field away, what are we building? How are we building it? When will it be built? And are we working with the school committee so that we're not going to face some Title IX issues? We're going to work with, you know, I fully respect the seniors in this town. I think this town is also facing some serious issues with the seniors getting very upset with what's going on as well. So something needs to be done, but looking at the next level and explaining how that, whatever we take away, where is it going to go? That might help as well.
And I assure you, that conversation did happen with the school committee. They were very clear about how insistent they were that before we started any construction of the building, the new field had to be in place and playable to the same level or better.
Thank you.
Now that I've spoken to the school committee, Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. Good evening. Alan Jacobs, Precinct One and also Chair of the School Committee. And let me talk in my capacity as Chair of the School Committee. So the first thing I'll say is that it's been clear to the school committee that it's not our job to decide where the senior center goes. It's not our job. Three years ago, when the Council on Aging reinstituted this whole process and they were something like 75, 90 sites, but the school committee said was, should the town of Falmouth choose a site that is under the auspices of the schools, just as long as we were made whole? In other words, if you take a building, because T-Ticket School was on it, East Falmouth was on it, you take a building, replace it with a building. You take a field, replace it with a field. As long as we're made whole, we would work with the town of Falmouth to make sure that the senior center get built. We had a meeting, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen July 7th, 2015. That I remember as the, "You guys really serious?" meeting, you know, asking us, and we said, "Yeah, we are." Four sites were identified, including the soccer field on Brick Hill Road. I do think that we did talk about the field hockey field and it was like, hmm, better not go there. Over the next few months, there was a whole vetting process that went on about that soccer field on Brick Hill Road. Numerous meetings were held and so forth. We held meetings with the athletic director, parents and so forth. Nobody really came forward and said there was any problem with that field. And in February 23rd, we actually declared that field as surplus land and we transferred it to the Board of Selectmen with lots of conditions, as you've said, that an athletic field would be built and would be usable before the senior center would even break ground. Unfortunately, because of the cost estimates having to do with the field, it never got past town meeting and so forth. That was the last that we ever heard as a school department or a school department or a school committee about site selection until I got an email on the morning of September 12th that said, "The Board of Selectmen are voting tonight and this Council on Aging has recommended Site Three." Okay? Well, that's kind of where we ended up today. So do we want to give up a field? No. We don't want to give up the field. But we recognize that we can't exist in this town as the schools and the town. We're one community. And we've worked really, really hard with the town manager, with the finance director, with the finance committee, and with the Board of Selectmen to make sure that we worked as one town. The town meeting members, many of whom are seniors, have been tremendously supportive of the school system. They've given us what we've asked for in terms of the budget and I think we've turned around and delivered. We now, we have a Level One high school and a Level One Lawrence School for something like the last four or five years. I think as a school committee, we recognize our responsibility. This issue hasn't come up in front of us, so we haven't talked. If it comes up on our agenda this week, we'll discuss it then. I'm happy to take any questions you have for me.
Alison Lushen, Precinct Two. I guess what I'm hearing, I guess I'm not hearing a lot of conflict. I'm hearing things kind of pointing in one direction and, you know, first of all, want to sort of apologize for being one of those people who comes late to an issue and then has an opinion about it. I've been on the other side of that and I know it can be very frustrating for the, you know, the people who've been involved in this for 10 or 12 years or whatever to suddenly have all these people. But for whatever reason, it finally hits people, you know, when it gets to a certain point that you start paying attention. But I think, you know, what I've heard tonight, and again, I didn't come with any super-strong opinions, but what I've heard tonight is the, you know, athletic people clearly want to make sure that their, you know, their interests are protected, which makes a lot of sense to me. There is support from the athletic school community to move the baseball and football field up to the high school so that it's all centralized. There is support from the neighboring church to potentially provide more space to make room for those things and I haven't really looked at how that works. There's support from the rec committee to put this at the rec center, potentially, a senior center. And then I think, I don't think anybody's saying, "We don't want a senior center." I think people are saying, "We like the idea of a broader center that could accommodate, whether it's, you know, a broader community center, potentially a pool, et cetera," that those things are not in conflict and that, and having those things doesn't mean that there can't be designated senior-only space. And so I don't, I guess what, everything I'm hearing points to, let's move the baseball and football fields up to the high school, wherever that may be, whether it's the church land or existing, you know, existing already high school land. And let's use what's now those fields next to the rec center to expand what's already a community center to include senior space, potentially a pool, potential... senior space, potentially a pool, potential other community space. It's centrally located, it's, you know, I guess, I guess I'm seeing this all kind of come together with, you know, people are objecting to certain things, but to me, that it all kind of is coming together, that everybody, that works for everybody. Maybe I'm missing something.
Again, Kathleen Burke, Athletic Director at the high school. We've never talked about moving the baseball field out of Fuller Field. The football field overlaps the baseball field. Not, not a good situation. The Commodores, we're actually meeting with them tomorrow, want to do a lot of improvements to the baseball field, but they're reluctant. They can't put a permanent fence up. They can't really do the improvements they want to because each fall, the football team tears up the outfield and has to put goalposts in there. So just to correct that misperception, that if it was to go with the, if the senior center, if ultimately decide that's where it's going to go, the plans would be to keep the baseball field there for the varsity team, for the Commodores. That does not negate the need for a baseball field at the high school. We don't have a football field or a baseball field at Falmouth High School. I don't know of another high school our size, except inner-city schools, that don't have that. Busing all those teams off, yeah, it's costly, there's safety issues, but it's just the program belongs at the high school. So the Fuller Field, baseball field would stay where it was, I think, at least at this point. The Commodores will put money into it, I think. They've been very willing to support that. I'm concerned, and it sounds like the Board of Selectmen has taken the field hockey girls' lacrosse field off the table, which, you know, was probably a good decision for tonight, but I'm concerned about whatever site, if the, the high school is chosen for the site, what impact will it have on, on the students and the athletes? So, you know, this option four, just one last point, when we did look at the feasibility study 10 years ago, there was real concern about access to, whether it was an elementary school, a senior center, faculty housing, of having cars come onto the high school campus. So if you're looking at a site in the woods that they have to access through the high school, that presents some additional issues, and it really was rejected, the idea of having any drive-through access through the high school, when you're trying to control who's in there, you know, to the best of your ability.
Forest access is not through the campus, it's from the road above it.
Okay, so not old campus drive?
Not true at all.
We don't know that. We can't do, we don't have permission.
No, it's a private road.
Oh, sorry, I forgot that one.
Okay, right, going in that way, but I just know that's an old issue, that if you build into the woods, you've got to get there somehow. I do want to thank the pastor of the Lutheran Church. They've always been very cooperative, and when we were looking to cite the turf field at the high school and find space for a practice football field, we did notice that little triangular, triangular piece of land that was right about where we wanted it, and there is a potential land swap there in the future. But no matter, you know, if you decide to, and the town decides to build it at the high school, we just have to be aware, it's going to, it's going to be a limiting factor for us to get a football field, a practice field, baseball fields up there. So even if we make, you know, the arrangements this time around, it limits things in the future. Okay? But I don't want the baseball people that are at home watching tonight think we're going to, you know, take away that baseball field. I don't think that's part of the plan right now.
Ms. Afonso?
Philip Afonso, Precinct Nine, Chairman Jones. People at home love you, just so you know, it's caught the good side of you. Are we at the part of the agenda where we're discussing alternative possible locations? Just to be clear, right?
Sure.
Okay. So kind of where I came from in the beginning of this whole deal, you move the seniors to the Gus Candy Center. You blow open the backside of Dillingham Ave. That football program gets shipped over to Falmouth High School. I mean, that should have always been, but you blow open that back access, you have parking. Now, with the Cape Cod Baseball League, we have a chance to put in VIP boxes. We have a chance to put in a nice back wall, maybe like Fenway, let's put some bleachers up there on top of the wall. Get creative. I mean, it's a moneymaker. Selectman Brown had suggested the Gifford Street parking lot. I love it. So I went and took a ride by, and I ran live video the other night. Chairman Jones, you had said that it was the first site to be looked into, but it was off the table. Selectman Brown, you kind of had a, you said you would talk to somebody too, and there was a possibility. I personally would love to see that looked at as a spot for the senior center, the only reason being, while I was there, and I stood on Gifford Street and I looked left, and I could see all the way down to the baseball fields, the Little League fields, cars sort of coming up and down there. And I looked to the right, it's not a mile distance like when you look to the left, but there's still plenty of room. And in all reality, there are trucks on that road, but the senior center's right next door, the service center's right next door, and to the best of my knowledge, we haven't had any major disasters out of there. As far as the, the senior center being located on the high school, I just don't think it's the right move. The Gus Candy is very underutilized. Next year is our 30th anniversary of the building. Have, have any of you been in there lately?
Yeah.
We have an article in Town Meeting to spend $20,000 on the teen center. Up until that article went on, the couches had wood sticking out of the back of them with metal nails. The fooshball tables are crooked, one of the legs are falling off. It's, it's done. So my, with my idea, rather than spending $10 million on a senior center over here and $5 million on an upgrade to the REC, you can spend $7 million to upgrade the recreation building to accommodate seniors and a community building. You can have, you can raise it up, put a running or walking track above the gym floor, blow out the backside of that building to where the football program used to be, and that could be their seniors' own facility. As of right now, let's say tomorrow, it got enacted. The senior center, let's be honest, it's kind of the size of this room. It's not, it's not great. Even if we were to give the senior center the front room, right by the, on the front corner there, it's all encased in glass, and then down further by the senior center, there's another room encased in glass, put some couches in there, set it up for, for sewing. I know sewnose, there's knitting on Friday and Saturday, I'm sure it was my, I suggested.
No, 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 it's that.
No, 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 Friday, Fridays. Thursdays and Fridays. It's the center of town, is my thing. If you go on Scranton Avenue, you have senior living right there. I know the, the, one of the attending senior center people had even said, "They all drive there," and it's not big enough to hold anybody else. But if you add somewhere like the Gus Candy Center, where there's handicap accessible, there's elevators, there's ramps, and it's on the bus route, it's right in the center of town, when seniors are going about their day with coming and going, they can stop by the senior center. This is no disrespect to the site selection committee. I know it's a lot of work. I mentioned earlier, we should talk about updating our communicate, ways of communication because this would be avoided, and it shouldn't be a youth versus senior battle. It's not a us versus them. It's, we all live here. We're all in this room because we care. There was, I mean, really? This is a special thing that happened here tonight, and I think, you know, on many different levels, you know, nobody should be mad at each other, and, you know, I just hope, moving forward, we can select an area that everybody's equally happy with.
Anyone else?
Greg Massmannian from Precinct One. Mr. Chairman and your, your board, I would, I would only ask, and there wasn't a lot of discussion about tonight, about the financial aspects and the impacts to the taxpayers of the town. I would only ask that when you do make a decision, that you think about what maybe corporations have done over the last 10 and 15 years when pressed by shareholders to be more accountable to profits. We should be accountable to our taxpayers in such that consolidation of existing town-owned properties makes a lot of sense. It's not only the cost to either renovate or expand, but you have infrastructure costs that you have each year, and typically, they go up, right? So if you can consolidate a facility that you already own, wherever that might be, potentially you'll be, you know, again, optimizing what you have here. So instead of two facilities with, you know, a set of maintenance folks and whatnot, you have one facility that can be used to the maximum. I mean, I heard some discussion about, you know, sharing doesn't work. Sharing's been going on for years in corporations. You know, hundreds of people in one facility do share. It takes a little effort and organizational, but it can be done. So if we can think about keeping the financial aspects in play here, what it's going to really cost not only to build, but to maintain, keep that facility, so I would, I would advocate consolidations. Okay?
Just to assure you, with Mr. Patterson here, there's no way we can't be always considering that. Anyone else have something they'd like to say before we move into our debate? Consideration?
Hello, I'm Ann Precing, Precinct Two, and I'm a member of the Steering Committee for Falmouth Aquatics, a nonprofit group that hopes to bring a pool to Falmouth. And I just want to put out there, when we're talking about consolidating and providing services for the town, we hope that you do keep in mind a pool. We have been, any site you've talked about, we're thinking about too, as far as how we can match up with you. The Gus Candy Fuller Field is intriguing to us because we have found out that there are above-ground pools, Olympic-quality construction. In fact, they use them for the Olympic trials. We had heard that Gus Candy Fuller Field was not a good place to put an in-ground pool, and now we are doing research for above-ground pools. So we had heard that the wetlands there was not something we wanted to dig into. If we could put in an above-ground pool, that, again, would share services that are available to serve from kids to the seniors. So we want to put that out there, that in planning facilities that are combined, that they're a pool that would provide benefit to the young, to the old, and it doesn't have to be an in-ground pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've heard from everybody. Do we want to try to take any action tonight? I was prepared to try to. The Lutheran Church has thrown a question in there I was not expecting, so I'm not sure if that warrants taking a little more time. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, well, I, I think we definitely need to bring the town council into this because I'm not sure we want to put a $8 or $9 million building on a piece of property that the town doesn't own. And so I would think that there would have to be at least a purchase understanding, and I'm not sure, based on communication, that actually, one of the, one of the members of that congregation called me yesterday and mentioned it to me ahead of time, and in the conversation, there apparently wasn't any consideration of that. So I think we have some things that would have to be worked out before we could, in a responsible way, commit to making a site selection on that property.
Right.
If I could say, I, one of my fears, I'm 72, so I am a senior, but my community is made up of more than 50% of people over 65, I can tell you, and I have not heard one person in favor of putting a senior center on a high school property. So when I come at it, I'm listening to my constituents, my peers. You guys have your own little group, but honest to goodness, we as Selectmen have to look out for the entire community. And I, I'm not trying to target you, I actually respect all the groundwork that's been done, looking at all those 40-plus sites, because it really has helped us, you know, narrow it down to the view that we're looking at right now. That, that's a huge amount of work, but I think, from my perspective, I'm a Selectman for the entire town, all the citizens of the town, and I have to back off and say, "What makes sense for this community as a whole?" I can't just pick out a small group of people, a subset of my generation, or my, our generations, I guess you could say, and target a $10 million facility for that smallest segment of our population without seeing it being part of the bigger picture. So that's what's caused me to stop, back up and reflect on this and say, "Can't we do a better job in this community of meeting the full spectrum of needs of, of everybody?" And so that's, that's why I've been listening through the last two years and sitting on the Select Board to all of these meetings and hearings, hearing everybody's concerns, but then backing up and saying, "I have to look out for the entire community. I can't just simply focus on one small subgroup, some cohort." And that's where I, why I am where I'm. I'm concerned that if we went forward on one of those high school sites, it would get turned down either in the next two town meetings or in the referendum in May, based on what I'm hearing. And that's just going to push out building a senior center that much further. That's the message I'm getting. And so I would like to find a site that we could start building quickly so that we can provide the facility that you guys would like without seeing it kind of bouncing around. And that's why I like the school administration building site, not the building itself. That's our, but I think, and actually, that's the one that has the least complications. We, if we settled on that site, we could put a shovel in the ground, probably starting in the fall of next year. We'd have to go through the May referendum, we'd have to go through all the design process, all the contracting, but that, to me, is the most expedient way to get a senior center built in the shortest amount of time. And I think if you look at the traffic patterns, I think I mentioned this previously, it's possible for people to make only right-hand turns and pull into that site. And we've already reached out to Tom Kerr, who's the Director of the Cape Cod Community, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, and he has said that he would be glad to route the sea line on request, pass that door, and drop people off at the very front of a senior center located at that. So people could actually be dropped off and walk in the door, right out of the bus, and they, of course, are equipped with wheelchair ramps and lifts, and we give that kind of access that I think we need to be sympathetic to for those people who live in those multi-unit apartments, starting with the Cape Cod Apartments there on Elm Road, down Main Street, Scranton Avenue, as mentioned, 704 Main Street. You've got the whole Tadic Apartments and Schoolhouse Green Apartments in there next to Stop &amp; Shop. That's where a large section of our needy seniors are, and from my perspective, I want to make sure we're making access to that senior center as easy as possible for that cohort, because I think they're the ones that are less likely to ask for help, and yet we need to make it accessible. And so that's where I'm coming from. I would love to see it at Gus Candy, but we got to move a field in order to make that happen, and that's an extra amount of money. If we can all get together and say, "That's the way to go," and we can get that momentum going, and everybody on board, and we can get it through town meeting and get that referendum vote passed, great, let's do it. But I think we need to get together as a community and say, "Yes, that's it. That's what we want to do. We're going to make that investment, and it's in the best interest of the town as a whole." So how we get to that point, and I think it is our job as the Selectmen, Select Board, to somehow or other rally around, figure out how to rally the support we think is the best site and the one that's going to get that broadest support from the community.
So I want to echo one thing you did say, which is one of the reasons why I also backed off Site Three, and I was, you know, suggested I was doing it for emotional reasons. I was doing it for the exact same reasons you were saying, is it was clear to me that we were not going to get that passed. And it may have been clear to me because people were being emotional and people were fighting against it, but it cleared to me that we were going to have enough of a hindrance that we were not going to get the town meeting votes. And that's the reason why I backed off, not because I was forced by emotion, but I read the tea leaves and said, "It's not going to happen, and we need to come up with a different plan." The reason why Gus Candy, to me, is much more attractive than it has ever been is with the idea of the school committee saying, and of the athletic department saying, "We are now ready to stand behind the idea of moving the football field out to the high school." And two or three years ago, when they had the turf people wanting to do that, the school department hadn't come out and said, "Yes, we want to do that first." department hadn't come out and said, yes, we want to do that first. I'm very sure that the turf group would come right back in. If we make a public statement and the school department makes a public statement, that's what they want to do, they'll have their committee ready the next day, we're saying, we're ready to help. We're ready to pull that community together, get that done. And if they go with all-purpose field, that can be done fairly quickly, so that the football field can actually be, stop being used fairly soon, and we can get that spade in the ground to get the senior center started at Gus Cante.
Mr. Brown?
I agree, that was my same thinking, that we had tried to move the football program, it didn't seem to have traction and support. I didn't really expect that it was going to be resurging strongly. I'm glad it is, belongs there. So if that's going to be a part of it, I would be supportive of the Gus Cante site. I didn't see it working without moving the football program.
I didn't either. And I still, I still haven't seen a plan that makes it look right. And what I would like to do is to charge turf department to come back and say, you now have the full, not necessarily the full space, because the baseball field will stay there, but you have that football, or at least half of the field to be able to work with, to give us a plan that might accomplish everything we want to, and that we could go to Town Meeting saying, this is what the plan would look like on that site with an expanded area. He only looked at making it connected to the Gus Cante, or changing the Gus Cante into a senior center. But now with the added field space to be able to use, I think we might be able to really get a top-notch-looking plan to come to Town Meeting with. Mr. Brown?
My question with that is, we don't know the cost of moving the football field. So that would all have to, it, this, I like the Gus Cante plan, I think we've, my assessment of what we heard is that the high school field, although the committee preferred it, and I will almost always go with the committee's recommendation, give them a lot of weight, in this case, there just seems to be little chance of it passing, as many people have said, a couple of us on the board. But in looking at Gus Cante, I'm hesitant, because we have one last question mark, and that is, what is the price of moving the football field, and can we move it, raise the funds, and move it at the same time as accomplishing the senior center? I think, you know, Mr. Patterson's thoughts about the administration building, we made an extensive survey of the seniors, they were overwhelmingly against the administration building, for reasons of its history, for reasons, they perceived the traffic there to be worse than Gus Cante, in terms of the numbers, even if we did another access road. So that's, for those reasons, I've always had a hesitation about the administration building. I really like the Gus Cante concept, I just have a question mark about how we could accomplish the, moving the field at the same time.
And so we had some dollar figures put before us two years ago by the turf group, and that was involved moving out there.
I can give you the numbers, if you'd like. The turf field, that's the high school?
To the mic, Kathleen, if you don't mind.
I can take short.
For the people at home.
You are right, Chairman, the turf field committee would be tired if I called them. I wouldn't have to wait till tomorrow. But the price tag on the turf, the multipurpose turf field at the high school was $2.8 million. We had commitments of $1.2 million, including a $500,000 commitment from the road race. So we had asked the town to fund $1.6 million for the turf field, and that included the bleachers, the scoreboard, the lights, the works, but it wasn't part of the capital plan. And that seemed to be the roadblock at the time. The school, I think it's safe to say, the school department, the school committee supported it, but it wasn't on the capital plan, and it kind of got lost in the transition between school committees and superintendents. So 2.8 were the plans three years ago, and we had raised a significant amount of that. The article that went to Town Meeting was to ask each taxpayer for $60 once on their tax bill. And when I tell people that, they're like, oh, wow, I would have done that. But it wasn't communicated. Somewhere, it became a mixed private, you know, group versus the school group, but that would be the cost. And you are correct, that can happen very quickly, where any of these grass fields are a two-year proposition.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I just, definitely while you're there, they certainly have the breakdown of what the cost would be. So it would be pretty easy for them to update them, and this is three years later, so there's bound to be an escalation in cost of it. So obviously, we're looking at $3 million, probably find out easily. Perhaps the price of the turf itself has come down, I don't know.
You're right.
Because of the quantities with which they're putting them in these days. So you think it would be fairly straightforward for them to come up with a new figure?
I think so. CDM did the plans, and they are ready. The plans are ready to go. You asked me a question earlier, because one of the reservations about the turf field was the concern about carcinogens, and the fill material is chewed-up tires. Many schools have gone to an alternative fill material, not composed of tires, it's going to be a silicone or cork-based, environmentally sensitive, and just takes away that concern. Again, slightly higher, I think, in cost, but there are other, you know, other accommodations that could be made to keep that, that price tag down. But I think, yeah, $3 million probably, but I think we've also addressed that issue that was a factor for many people in the community. Our turf field's with rubber fill, safe, and now we have an option.
Just quickly, I think, you know, what we've really heard tonight is that, you know, even though it's not on the agenda, we're talking about the fact that the schools are now looking to move the field, so, you know, we've also heard, even though it's not on the agenda, that the Gus Cante needs some updating. So I think, to me, the idea of creating a project where we're accomplishing all of these things that we know are going to come before our community, and in the end, really, I think maximizing our value, you know, there are so many needs in this community. I mean, there really, and there are things that are going to come down the line that we don't know about yet. And so I think to be fiscally responsible, but at the same time to build something that can be really a point of pride and a centerpiece for the town, to me, combining, and again, it's separate spaces, I thank you for, you know, really clarifying that. We're talking about, you know, separate facilities in one building, and it does happen, we saw many other communities that have that same model, and that are doing very well. So the idea of really creating a place that is a point of pride, and someplace that's central to the town, I think, to me, when I hear all of these competing, you know, expenses that are coming down the line, this, you know, the Gus Cante provides both something that is fiscally responsible, but also something that can be really, you know, beautiful and important, and a centerpiece for our town. So I still, I hear some of the concerns, the price tag on the field is a big one, but I just feel that that's the way to, I hesitate to build another building that the town has to maintain. You know, there are separate costs associated with that, that point was raised earlier. So I don't know that the town needs a new building. I think to expand an asset that we already have is very different than building another large freestanding facility.
And the price of the field actually makes me feel a little better, because any of the places we were going to put it was going to be about a million-dollar field. I'm convinced that we could probably, with private donations, get this altar field for a million dollars in town funds, or at least pretty close to it, saying, well, that's the same cost it was going to be for that new field hockey lacrosse field or the new soccer field, and get a much bigger package.
We're accomplishing something really important that the school committee, the athletic department, and other folks are indicating that, you know, to move that field to the high school at some point.
Now, to be the wet blanket, quite literally, we do have the concern about the Gus Cante being in a flood zone, and being aware that we are putting a town asset into a potential flood zone, and being aware that the planning board's going to say, no, we keep advising you, you've got to be careful about doing that, we want to have some regulations. So it is, we just need to be open to, it's not, I think, the worst part of the flood zone, but it is certainly part of it. So our ex-planning board member?
I think that's certainly a concern, but with careful planning, like perhaps parking under, elevated piers, there's certainly ways you can do it, as long as you plan it correctly.
Mr. Jacobs?
So I just want to address the whole issue of moving the field. So yes, it is in the school committee's capital improvement plan. As you said earlier, I think we put it out three years, because just being sensitive to all the expenditures in town and so forth. But if you wanted to come to us and we could move it, I think we'd be very happy to do that. I am concerned, I don't want it to be, we're building an all-purpose field. We don't know that yet. It could be, it could be a grass field, it could be a turf field. I think as a school committee, we don't have the expertise to make a decision today on whether it would be all-purpose or whether it would be grass. And we would look to the town to help us in terms of that. Kathleen brought up the whole issue of carcinogenics and so forth, we'd want to look closely at that. You're talking about siting this, what, one mile away from Long Pond, those kinds of things? The leaching and those kinds of things. So we'd want to be very, very careful, and I think you'd want to be very careful about that. And so we'd want to work together with you, with the Board of Health and so forth, to really look at that. So it may not be a turf field and it gets done in a year, it may be a real field and it may take, not a real field, but a grass field, and it may take longer. I just want to make that, that point really clear.
Thank you.
But as I understand, at the high school site, there is a very flat, grassy area already set up for potential football.
Siting would not be a problem.
And so the timetable would be shorter, certainly to put a field there, whether it's grass or turf, than any of the replacement field sites we're talking about.
Problem.
Just one last comment, and, you know, I don't care whether it's grass or not, I don't know whether I could turn my way over here to do this, Joe, so I will, sorry.
We just want to make sure everyone at home can hear what you have to say.
And it's, we would be happy with the grass field, but the advantage to an artificial turf field is it's four times the use. You can't overuse it. If you put a grass field at the high school for football, it won't be usable for field hockey, and it won't be very long, it's not usable for soccer or lacrosse. So that's the advantage to it, but we are very aware of the environmental impact, the health impacts, and I think by delaying, we're one of the last schools to put an artificial turf field in. If we do that, we've learned some lessons from a lot of other communities. You're right, the prices have gone down, but the materials that are used now, the top part lasts longer, and the environmental and health concerns have been addressed. So that's the problem with the turf, with a grass field, is overuse. It gets chewed up, and you can't play anything else but football on a football field, okay? Not in the fall.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
And I would just remind that with a natural field, you have to fertilize it quite heavily, and that's a source of nitrogen that's going to perk into our groundwater just north of Long Pond. So the groundwater is going to carry those nutrients into the pond. So we don't get off scot-free, from a health standpoint, or from an environmental impact standpoint, by using a natural turf field. We will be having to maintain it and heavily fertilizing it to keep the turf as rich and full and consistent as we can to provide for a quality sports field.
Any other comments?
So are we going to make a motion to address the architect, to maybe look into the Gus Cante a little more?
I think it would be appropriate to vote a trace of a site, and if that site is chosen, to ask them to come to Town Meeting with the best plans we can present to, at Town Meeting, representing what it could look like there.
So I'll do it, because I already supported the Gus Cante, so if people hate me for it, they're already going to hate me for it. So I make a motion to choose the Gus Cante as the site for the senior center.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
And I will take that as a recommendation, that I contact the architect with Mr. Susos and come up with that plan.
Do we want to recess while people are leaving?
I think that's a good idea.
We're going to take a short recess?
We're going to take a short recess.